I'd like to call the order this meeting of the Raleigh City Council. Thank you all for being here. We're going to start this evening with a joint hearing with the Raleigh Historic Development Commission.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I'm Tanya Tully with the Department of City Planning. Hopefully you had a chance to look at the landmark designation reports and the wonderful pictures there because I'm going to be just speaking without photos this evening. I want to start by recognizing the members of the Raleigh Historic Development Commission that are here this evening. Over to your right, especially Ian Dunn, who is the Chair of our Research Committee. The RHDC reviewed the reports and found that the properties this evening meet the criteria for designation. You then referred them to the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resources as required by statute. After closing the public hearing, our request is for you to refer the matter back to RHDC to consider the recommendations from the state as well as additional information received during the public hearing. First up, we have the Valley Lewis and Archie Henderson House, which is located at 530 Oakwood Avenue. It was constructed in 1900 but had some changes over the years so that its appearance today is from the mid-1950s, which is when Valley Lewis and Archie Henderson House Henderson lived there. The house is historically significant for its association with Valley Lewis Henderson. Valley resided in the house for over 65 years, during which time she led community efforts that contributed to the preservation and protection of the Oakwood neighborhood. Her leadership in the Oakwood Garden Club and her involvement in the Society for the Preservation of Historic Oakwood had a direct impact on the appearance of downtown Raleigh. The house was built around 1900 as a one-story roughly L-shaped dwelling, which was overbuilt around 1920, and the exterior is substantially the way it was when she moved into it in 1933. Valley and her husband Archie added the rear sun porch, front entry in the front brick wall, a 1955 garage, and the garden, which Valley affectionately called Hell's Half Acre. All the exterior features of the house are considered significant as they predate her residency or were added by her. The garden illustrates her long-term work with the Oakwood Garden Club, and the hardscape features add special significance to the property. These features are the lone stone, the low stone wall that partially encloses the garden, the rock stair leading from Elm Street, and a four-foot rock wall on the west property line. Also this evening, we have Oak Grove Cemetery, which is located, addressed on Beryl Road but accessed off Ligon Street. And it was started in 1885 with another significant date being 1937. Oak Grove Cemetery is significant historically and culturally as the burial ground of Method, one of two surviving Freedmen's colonies in Wake County. The cemetery is a reflection of the community's development. Oak Grove Cemetery originated around 1873 as a cemetery for Oak Grove, excuse me, Oak City Baptist Church, which stood at the southwest corner of the cemetery until the late 1870s. In 1937, Method's citizens established the Method Civic League and converted the cemetery into a community cemetery and renamed it Oak Grove. As the only cemetery in the roughly 1870 Freedman's Village of Method is a literal and symbolic repository of its African-American pioneers. Those buried here reflect Method's earliest period of settlement during the Reconstruction Era and its growth, maturation, and burial practices in the Jame Crow Era until the late 1960s period of desegregation. The setting, although somewhat altered, remains peaceful, and its overall layout and design remain intact. Rural cemeteries, especially African-American ones, typically featured wood or uncut fieldstone markers, which are ephemeral and easily moved. The loss of these markers over time is a normal part of the cemetery's physical evolution. The integrity of workmanship is present in the numerous locally-made concrete grave markers that remain, most of which are in good condition. I do know that the property owner for the Henderson House is here in support, and I believe some folks from Method are also here.
We will open the hearing. Is there, actually, we'll take them separately. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to the Valley Henderson home? Okay, is there anyone here that wishes to speak to the Oak Grove Cemetery?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here again in front of you.
I'm sorry, can you give your name and address for the clerk, please?
Sorry. Marion Gervais, 3631 Stony Brook Drive, Durham, North Carolina. Born and raised in Method, North Carolina, which is now a part of Raleigh, which is the cemetery. The cemetery, Oak Grove, is associated with that community. I just wanted to thank you all for your support of our community over the years. I appreciate it. On a personal note, I wanted to share that my paternal grandmother, her brother, and his wife are buried in that cemetery. And I hope that you, this evening, will vote favorably on referring this back to the Raleigh Historic Development Commission for consideration of placing it as a Raleigh historic landmark. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the hearing. Do we need a motion for that, or?
You referred to the Historic Development Commission.
We'll refer that back to the RHDC to consider the recommendations of the State of North Carolina and any additional information. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to the requests and petitions of citizens. We have a very lengthy agenda tonight, so I want to remind everyone that we ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. I'll ask you to, I'll call out the first, well, I don't know how much, there's some room up here, the first four people. If you could move down closer to the front, that would be very helpful because we're going to try very hard to stay on schedule here. And when you start, give your name and address for the clerk. So first, we have Octavia Rainey. And the next ones are John Rochford, Ted Van Dyke, and Peggy Seymour.
Good evening. I would like to address the City Council.
Can you pull the mic down a little bit?
Okay.
Thanks. Okay.
The City of Raleigh response to Cliff Zinner at 316 North Fisher Street is unacceptable. Cliff Zinner should not be allowed to build in any city projects, any city projects. That was a slap on the wrist for Cliff Zinner, and he should not be allowed. There should be a thorough investigation of that house. You cannot place Dracula over the blood bank and you say it's all right. It's wrong. It is wrong for the city attorney to come back and give that slap on the face. That is wrong. I don't know where this city's at on this case, but he committed a crime. He committed a crime, and that is wrong. If that had been somebody black, y'all would be ready to take it to the hoops. And I want to say something else. I want to talk about Larry Jarvis. Larry Jarvis is head of a department that's supposed to have citizen engagement. He did not engage us. And for the record, yes, I am about civil rights. He's very anti-black. Very, very anti-black. He told the press, "We're not going back to the civil rights movement." That's what Octavia wanted. You tell him, "You damn right. You damn right." I've lived in that neighborhood all my life. You don't take $8 million and displace black people. You don't do that. That's wrong. You don't come to the community and not plan with the community. He only came twice, and then he nor his staff ever, ever came back in 18 months? And he gonna talk that trash about the civil rights movement? You gotta be kidding me. That proves that there's something wrong with that whole merger that Michelle and Ruffin did. He did not even abide himself by what you call engagement, what you call trust-building. He didn't do any of that. There's something wrong with that picture. There's something seriously wrong with that picture. And Nikki Jones is so arrogant, it pisses me off. Excuse me, Mayor McFarland, but it gets my goat. I am going to push this to the heel. I am not going to sit back. I am not going to let the new City Council, I'll be back in December. I will be back. The city is doing a disservice. Larry Jarvis is a disservice to this community.
Octavia. Okay, next we have John Rochford. Is John Rochford here?
Hello, my name's JP Rochford, 314 West Jones Street. I'm here to talk about Citrix Cycle. When I first requested a chance to speak, I intended to implore the Council to release more information on the system's performance, but I'm now here to praise the Department of Transportation's ongoing efforts to bring that data to the public. I was excited to see a bike-share program was coming to Raleigh as New York City Bike was one of my primary means of transportation before moving here. I was encouraged to see Raleigh's plan for a rapid deployment of stations and look forward to trying the service upon launch. As to be expected with a new program, though, there were some issues. I found initial sign-up to be challenging, and throughout the summer, my experience was that many of the bikes were unavailable. I also found certain stations, most notably the docks at the bus station downtown, did not work at all. Customer service cited these as ongoing issues being investigated, and they seem to be addressing them. Not wanting to only rely on personal experience, I sought out data. However, the data available to the public was limited to a running total of rides taken and a list of top stations. I contacted the Department of Transportation and noted that other successful programs provide far more data to the public. For example, COGO, Columbus, Ohio's program, allows anyone to download anonymized lists of every ride taken in the program for the last two years, allowing the public to see where each ride went and for how long it occurred. Fontaine Burris from Raleigh DOT was incredibly responsive to my requests. She investigated my specific issues with the program and worked with the city's emerging technologies team to develop a public information dashboard that provides detailed trends on ridership, including heat maps of the most-used routes, hourly and daily trends, and other useful information. The dashboard is still in development, but I was incredibly encouraged by the response. Fontaine also cited specific data points that show that the program is performing above initial expectations. For example, average trips per bike per day is above benchmark cities such as Charlotte, Chattanooga, Spartanburg, and San Antonio. More data on this program will be incredibly valuable to the public, helping guide zoning and infrastructure decisions, assisting investors in allocating capital to real estate projects, and informing the public of their, the value of their investment in the bike-share program. Furthermore, the data could be useful for academic research, press coverage, and other apps and startups to develop around the bike-share ecosystem. Finally, publicly available data creates accountability to the private interests involved in the program, Beugeon, Core Logistics, and Citrix. As recipients of public funds, users' dollars, and users' private information, these private interests should be held accountable as stewards of data and treasure. A key component of a healthy representative of democracy is an informed public. The onus is on the City Council to ensure the public is well-informed of the investments made on their behalf. I'm grateful that Raleigh's DOT has already taken action on this, and I implore the Council to support them in their efforts. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ted Van Dyke.
Good evening, councilors. Thanks for having me. I'm here to speak very briefly about Cameron Village's Streetscape Plan. We have submitted that to you for your review.
Name and address.
Oh, yes. Well, it's not Streetscape Plan. Ted Van Dyke, I'm at 1304 Hillsborough Street here in Raleigh. Speaking on behalf of Cameron Village, we've submitted a Streetscape Plan to you, which should be in your packet. Absent a formal process in our UDO to amend a Streetscape Plan, we are asking you tonight if you will do us the courtesy of initiating a Streetscape Plan review, which will basically come forward as a text change. The first step would be to ask staff to initiate a review and then come back to Council with recommendations once they've vetted it. And if you can do that for us, we'd greatly appreciate it.
So, Mayor?
Yes.
So, there's been a lot of conversation with staff and Cameron Village and with Ted as it relates to this, so I'd like to make a motion that we ask staff to work with Ted and his group on the Cameron Village Streetscape Plan moving forward.
Okay. All in favor? Pose. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sure. Okay, next we have Peggy Seymour.
Hi, my name is Peggy Seymour, and that Seymour is spelled S-E-Y-M-O-R-E. And I live at 3125 Stanhope Avenue. I would like to thank the City of Raleigh for giving the citizens and avenue to speak publicly to the City Council and therefore allowing me to speak tonight. I would also like to personally thank Russ Stevenson and Kay Crowder for their support over the many years on items of interest to District D. I have come before the City Council tonight to ask why a City Council member needs to ask a lawyer if they can write a statement about whether a condition was met that they asked to be put in a zoning case. A city staff did not ask for the condition to be added as a condition in a zoning case, but maybe I should have asked the city staff what was their, what they used to determine the acceptability of that condition. Will the writing of this statement make a difference of any, on anything? I doubt it. Will my neighborhood get any future relief from the headlights that have flooded out of the deck daily into our homes for the past 10 years? I doubt it. By writing the statement, maybe the zoning enforcement might look into whether the condition was actually met, but I doubt that will happen either. Will I feel better if the council member writes a statement? Yes. And why will I feel better? That answer is between the City Council member and myself. I only hope that the new mayor and new City Council members will be better stewards of our city neighborhoods. If a new council member asks that a condition be added to a zoning petition on a major project, then I hope at that time they will ask city staff to contact them when the final project layout sheet has been submitted for approval. If neighborhoods, city staff, and developers spend hours working on a small-area plan, then I hope that the new City Council members will work extra hard to make sure that those dreams of so many might have the possibility of coming true. If a City Council member feels that it is their fiduciary responsibility to approve a project, then it should be that same City Council member's civic duty to that project's neighborhood and to the citizens of Raleigh to make sure that the zoning condition was completed to the letter of the law and to take ownership of that fiduciary decision. Thank you for your time. In addition to this, I'm also submitting a copy of the Board of Adjustments, Raleigh, North Carolina Rules of Procedure, Section 5(c-7), which states, "Refiling, except as provided in Section 5(c-6) here and under, once the board has made its decision in a case, any applicant shall be prohibited from submitting the same request for the subject property for a period of one year from the date of the previous application." It does not say that you can't resubmit it. Anyway, so I thank you so much for your time, and Russ and Kay, I hope you have a wonderful life.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Wanda Hunter. And then the next after those are Barbara Smalley McMahon, Douglas Johnson, and Callie Wright.
Gail.
Gail.
Gail. My name is Wanda Hunter. I reside at 112 Maple Street. I'm a new homeowner at Maple Street. It is located in an area what the city has now labeled as East College Park, which is a program that is run by the city. Home ownership should be a joyful process, but to the contrary, this process has been a nightmare. I was treated in a condescending manner and in a discriminatory manner. The main issue I came to address tonight is the defective flooring that was utilized in my newly-constructed home. I have been through every avenue available to address this issue, and there has been no resolve. So firstly, upon noticing the defective flooring, one day after closing, which occurred on August 27th, I contacted my real estate agent, Michelle Keaton-Barrow. We then contacted the builder, Unity 3, Darlene and Charles Jones, and also the contractor, St. Ochs CDC, Sterling, and then Patty Brown. The first response was the sending installer, which occurred on September 7th. It is evident in the pictures provided that the damage was not caused during the installation. I then was advised to reach out to the distributor, Jeff Autton of Knight-Hartwood Flooring. I followed the instructions and was met with, "I am only the third customer to complain about the defective flooring." After no resolve with the flooring distributor, I reached out to Hillary Leacock with the city because I participated in the city's program, and they provided me with $20,000 for a down payment assistance. I spoke with Hillary on September 16th. So, we developed a meeting that happened on September 24th with myself, my real estate agent, Michelle Keaton-Barrow, Unity 3, Darlene Jones, St. Ochs CDC, Sterling, and Patty Brown, and also Will from the city, and also the flooring distributor, Jeff Autton. I was told that these marks give character to the flooring, and it is an upgrade. I made it clear that I was not satisfied and wanted some resolution. At that time, Unity 3 and St. Ochs CDC agreed that they would send me a resolution in writing, which I still have not received. The flooring that you see in the pictures that say 112 is three pictures. They are defective overrun, and it's no longer offered by the manufacturer. The young man, Jeff Autton, is just a distributor. On October 5th, my mortgage broker and City Councilman Branch also came to view the flooring and agreed the flooring was defective. Since then, I've also talked to my neighbors, and also you will see an email from a flooring consultant, who also said it is defective flooring. I also have talked to advocates in the community, Mr. Johnny Blaylock, and also Mr. Danny Coleman, who have also agreed that it is defective flooring. So, I am here tonight because the city invested and provided me with down payment assistance to ask that there be some type of move to have my flooring replaced. I also would like a two-year warranty, reimburse the extra I also would like a two-year warranty, reimburse the extra month of rent, or try to accommodate the builder so that they would not have to move furniture for during, during the replacement of my floors. And now that we have moved in, that it be their responsibility for moving the furniture, and if the process is longer than one day, that they be responsible for accommodations of me and my children.
Well, we're, I'm glad that we were able to help you purchase the house, but you closed on the house, and when you closed, that was an agreement between you and who built the house. We're not involved in this. Our only involvement was selling the lot.
Okay.
So, I don't know why you're coming. This is between you and who built the house.
And I went through all of those avenues, and I also...
But we don't have, we don't, this is not the, I mean, this would be like you going to anybody and saying, "Step in and fix this. We're not engaged in this."
So, do you want to amend the agreement for the $20,000 that you also provided me with for down payment assistance?
I'm not talking about that. You're asking us to fix the floors, and I'm telling you, you, once you closed with the builder, you've closed on the house. You said everything was okay when you closed with the builder, so your arguments with the builder, we're not engaged in this. We didn't build the house.
So, where is the accountability on the city for the builder making sure that they put in reputable materials into the houses that they're building in the city's program?
Can you help me with this, please?
The city doesn't have any responsibility to make sure that the materials in the house are to any specific standard. After we sold the lot and provided the financial assistance, we couldn't, we don't have any legal responsibility.
So, you mean to tell me that anybody can go out here and pick up materials from the dump and build a house on a city's lot, and there's no accountability and no measurability?
No, we're saying, no, wait a minute. We're saying that when you sign that paper, closing with the builder, you are responsible. You're saying everything is okay. When you sign that paper, that's your responsibility to check out that you're accepting that house when you take it. So, that's your responsibility.
Yeah. What she's saying is your remedies for defective materials, any remedy expires once you close on the house and take ownership, and that's, that just is what the law is.
Well, I have a question. This is part of our program?
Which part? The downtainment assistance or the original selling of the lots?
Well, both, let's say. I mean, in other words, in order for this house to get built, this was part of our program, right?
Well, we sold the lots, the city-owned lots, to the builders.
Okay.
To move forward with the program. So, we sold the lots.
Do we have any conditions on the program in terms of if we sell these lots real cheap to a builder, which we did? Do we have any conditions on the builders to provide a home warranty? Because like when I built my house, I had a home warranty, and after a certain period of time, my builder came to me and asked me for my punch list, in which case I could provide a list of things that needed to be addressed. And so, you're saying that as part of our program, we did not require the builders to provide a home warranty?
They did. I understand, do you not have the home warranty?
There's an 11-month warranty on the home, but it has already been discussed with the builder that they're saying that they will not replace the floors, because the floors that they have placed in there initially, before I put anything into the home, were defective, and before I moved anything in there, that's why I've been through all these avenues to show what the flooring looked like.
And why did you close on the house?
Because number one, I'm not a flooring specialist. I went through with my real estate agent, and then when I took somebody over to view the home before I even moved anything in, they noticed it. So, it's just like when you've been somewhere several times, there are things that sometimes you don't notice. But then when you go back and somebody points it out to you, you'd be like, "Yeah, that's right." So, that's exactly what happened, and as soon as that was noticed, that's when I brought the notice to my real estate agent, and we went over and looked at it. And then as soon as we did, we contacted St. Aug CDC, and Patty Brown came over, and she was disgusted by what she saw, because you could see the expression on her face. And that's why I've had the meeting with Hillary and Will from the city. I've also had Cory over. Cory has seen it. I have had several people that I have talked to about this flooring in this house before I even moved one stitch of furniture into this home.
So, the 11 months, during the 11-month period, are they not responsible under the home warranty to replace the floor?
I would think so.
I would think so.
I would think so, and if you look at these markings, they're perfectly spaced.
Yeah.
They're very equally spaced. That suggests to me it's a manufacturing defect.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it seems to me that, you know, for a first-time home buyer, and we're trying to help people become first-time home buyers and make this a pleasant and joyful experience, it seems to me, even if we don't have a legal obligation, maybe there's some way we can intercede with the builder to get them to honor the warranty and take care of this.
I appreciate that, I really do, but, you know, how many houses are sold in this city every day? We can't, this is not our legal role.
I understand that.
To intercede in these. So...
But this is the city's program.
It's...
And this program is made to specifically help people. It's supposed to diversify this neighborhood as we see gentrification come in here. It is supposed to uplift this neighborhood.
All right, I'll, let's let you talk to the legal department and see if there's anything they can figure out we can do. Okay? Because we're not going to figure this out tonight.
Okay, not to mention that I have called Nikki Jones several times and left him messages, and he has not returned my calls.
Okay.
So, if this is the way, this is how we get 316 Fisher Street.
Okay.
There's no accountability. There's no measurability about what goes on in our communities and what y'all allow people to build off the backs of poor people. I worked hard, I worked hard to be a homeowner.
Okay, I'm sorry. We're going to move on to the next person. I'm sorry you're upset, but we really, we have...
Ms. Hunter, get with our legal team and see what can happen there.
Who is the legal team, and will they respond?
Robyn, can you, I hate to, but can you have someone from your department talk to Ms. Hunter, and it may be that we direct her to outside legal to help her?
I think that's probably going to be the way to go from the city's perspective. It would be clearly not an illegal responsibility, but there may be some outside legal assistance that could deal between them, between the builder and the homeowner as far as what remedies they may have. I do see that she has contacted the manufacturer and the builder, and they have said that it's not defective, so that's, I think, where the dispute...
Who was the builder of this house?
Lives.
Unity 3, Darlene and Charles Jones.
St. Aug CDC.
And do they have any other?
And St. Aug CDC is the contractor.
I'd be curious to know if they have any other structures to build.
They have, they have. A young lady on Heck Street contacted me this weekend when she found...
All right, we're going to have Robyn's office.
Can I answer his question, please? He asked a question. I just want to answer what the councilman asked. There is, it's a young lady on Heck Street, when she found out that I was speaking at city council, she contacted me and said that she had the same experience, and Unity 3 was very unprofessional with her.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wanda.
Okay, next we have Barbara Smalley-McMahon. Oh, I'm sorry, I was just saying Barbara Smalley-McMahon.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Smalley-McMahon. I live at 602 North Bloodworth Street. I'm here to speak on housing. I recently had the pleasure of going to the African-American Museum on a trip with friends celebrating the 80th anniversary of the Carolinian. Having been a licensed professional counselor and pastoral counselor by profession for 30 years, my soul is often moved by the fact that it is our nature as human beings to seek out and to soak in the light, even and especially during our darkest times. Thus, once we were in the belly of the slave ship in the African-American Museum, I found myself drawn toward quotes of hope and inspiration that were hanging on the wall. I want to share three of those quotes with you now and tell you why I think they need to be part of what guides you in fulfilling your responsibilities to provide low income and affordable housing for the people of Raleigh. "After the Civil War," one quote said, "African-Americans found themselves resisting a new form of oppression." It's called segregation. In the face of the attacks, African-Americans created institutions and they created communities to help them survive and thrive. I've been working in grassroots work with people in southeast Raleigh since 2013. I've seen how much community means to these people. I know what they're doing on weekends to lift each other up with food banks and opportunities for people to share, to sell their goods that they're creating, their jewelry. They should not be left out of the process of deciding what happens to their community. The next quote I noticed in the museum reads, "Despite daily denials of their humanity, enslaved African-Americans sustained a vision of freedom by making prayer, family, dance, and even work their own. They built their own identities." These are people who were taught by the way they were treated that they were not valuable human beings. I worked in mental health for 30 years. I know that a false sense of yourself as a devalued, unbeautiful human being...
Very much. We're going to have to ask everyone to stick to the time limit tonight.
You're doing wrong by not respecting the culture and the people in downtown Raleigh.
Thank you very much. Next we have Douglas Johnson, and then Calla Wright, and Kathy Firth after that.
Hello, I'm Doug Johnston, 120 Forest Road, and my interest tonight is our investment in Dix Park, and particularly your future roles, whatever they may be, in maximizing our returns. Before retirement, I was counsel for the State Treasurer and the Local Government Commission, and so for me, it's natural to see Dix Park as an investment. The park master plan is complete, and a study of the edge has begun. The edge study is key to park investment strategy. Edges are as important as the space they surround. They amplify the space or they'll diminish it. They're never neutral. Some development will confront the park tightly and assertively. Others will engage it with deference loosely and quietly. Our investment in the park turns on those choices. When we get it right at each place on the edge of the park, the whole is greater than the sum of the parts, and that alliance match maximum mutual benefits I've come to call Dix Dividends is a matter you'll see in emails from me that I hope you'll find useful personally in building and preserving our investment in Dix Park, something everyone can get behind. An edge that simultaneously amplifies Dix Park and its neighbors amplifies Raleigh. It's an investment in ourselves. Amplify Dix.
Thank you very much. Next we have Calla Wright, and after her, Kathy Firth and Peter Firth.
Good evening, I'm Calla Wright, 613 Cooper Road, Raleigh. I'm here this evening to discuss issues as it relates to the gentrification, reused wastewater tower, and to make a public request to get a listing of all city-owned property dating back to 1999 with the land purchase and selling prices, requesting that this information be made public. I've spoke to Cory Branch about this, but I'm making a public request for this. As a resident in southeast Raleigh, I continue to witness council and staff members and along with former Charles Meeker restructuring neighborhoods that have caused demolishing of public housing, such as Chaffas Heights, Walnut Terrace, Halifax Courts, have displaced many families and contributed to the loss of our rich history regarding our segregated housing patterns that were established by the city of Raleigh. We have destroyed these most precious memories so that the real estate developers and the affluent citizens, white citizens, can move into our neighborhoods. Former Charles Meeker will also be known for the purchase of a cheap piece of land in a black neighborhood, for the reused wastewater tower located on Sunnybrook Road in my backyard, for the sole purpose of watering the golf course in a white elite country club known as the Raleigh Country Club. How many of you are members of this Raleigh Country Club? I'd like to thank Councilman Crowder and Councilman Stevens for your support regarding my request to remove the reused wastewater tower because of stormwater damage. I have been looking forward to receiving a response to the city regarding the request regarding the removal of the water tower. The independent adjuster, Lavingood, has come out to talk to me, made very insulting statements. I felt they were very racist. I want to also make mention to Councilman Stevens regarding your value of equity and how it should be a guiding light for the city of Raleigh. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Kathy Firth.
Kathy Firth, 3640 Armitage Drive, Wake Forest. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. We are here again this month pleading for the lives of innocent children in the womb, asking that you end abortion in Raleigh and make Raleigh a sanctuary city for the unborn. What does God require of us? Psalm 97:10 says, "You who love the Lord hate evil." God's word doesn't say we are to hate the one who does evil, but we are to hate evil. We are first to hate the evil that resides in our hearts, then we are to hate evil we see carried out in the world, not the person, but the evil that has them enslaved. God hates evil. What does he consider evil? Proverbs 6:16 through 19 tells us, "There are six things that the Lord hates, seven that are in abomination to him: haughty eyes, a lying tongue, and hands that shed innocent blood; a heart that devises wicked plans; feet that make haste to run to evil; a false witness who breathes out lies; and one who sows discord among brothers." Tonight, we are shining the light on the evil that is abortion, the shedding of innocent blood. We are to hate the evil act of abortion. Last month, I shared with you the testimony of a former abortionist as he described the horror of killing innocent children. It was difficult to speak the words to you and difficult for you to hear them, I'm sure, but please consider the child. Consider the sheer terror, the pain he or she is experiencing as their limbs are torn away by the sofa clamp. I brought a research paper for each of you to read. It describes how and why innocent children in the womb feel pain. Yes, they feel pain. Please don't take my word for it. Read it for yourselves. This is evil, and we are required to hate it just as the Lord does. We have great compassion for children being led to slaughter daily in our city and for the mothers who, in their blindness and the deceitfulness of sin, are killing their children. We reach out to them with the gospel of Jesus Christ, in the same way we are sharing the gospel with you. God offers everyone who will come to come his free gift of salvation is for all who recognize their need for salvation from sin and their need for a Savior. God shows his love for us that while we were still sinners, Christ died for us, Romans 5:8. Jesus says in Matthew 9:18, "I came not to call the righteous, but sinners. If you have not placed faith in Jesus and repentant of your sins, I implore you, do not hesitate." God's word says today, "If you hear his voice, do not harden your hearts," Hebrews 3:15. God calls us to hate evil, first in our own heart and then in the world. Will you join him? Will you abhor what is evil and hold fast to what is good? Romans 12:9. Will you make Raleigh the first capital city in the U.S. to make abortion illegal and a sanctuary city for the unborn? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next we have Peter. Okay, we're going to, if we're going to clap, and we're going to take up a lot of time, we're going to start taking time away from people to speak, because we can't have this evening go well past midnight. So, Peter Firth.
My name is Peter. I live at 3640 Armitage Drive, Wake Forest, and as Moses faced a seemingly impossible task of going to Egypt to free the nation of Israel from bondage, we come here tonight with the incredible request to end abortion. Moses could not do it by himself, but God was with him. Pharaoh denied his demand to let the people go, and we are told that ending abortion is just not going to happen. We proclaim that it... We proclaim that it is going to happen, but not by our strength or power, but by the strength and power of God. Our weapons are not carnal, but mighty to the pulling down of strongholds. We are people of prayer, obedient to God first, and submitting to the authorities over us. We are not rogue agents of violence, nor even threatening as we have been stereotyped by some. God will set the captives of the womb free, free to live, just as he did the people of Israel. We argue our point peacefully, for we are a people of peace, as I said. We fully support the constitutional rights afforded to men and women, but when the law of man defies the law of God, then we must obey God and be true to his law and word. Let us be upright in heart and obedient to the law of God. Without carnal weapons, we rise up against the wicked and stand against evil doers. The Lord is our help. We will not be silent. God commands us to open our mouth, judge righteously, defend the rights of the poor and needy. Abortion is evil, and it destroys people, and it destroys families. The Lord will not forsake his people, but he will bring about justice for the righteous. So therefore, I pray to the God of vengeance, that he will rise up. May he judge the earth and come and repay the proud for what they deserve. Arrogant words exalt the wicked. Evil doers boast as they crush God's people. Murderers in their hearts, killing the most vulnerable who cannot defend themselves. They band together against the life of the righteous and condemn the innocent to death. Can wicked rulers be allied with God? Those who frame injustice by statute? Abortion is legal, but God is going to change that. And whose side will you be on when God decides to move? If God were not our stronghold, we would be undone. He is our refuge, and he will bring back on them their iniquity. They say that there is no God, and even if there is one, that they don't perceive that God does really even care. Understand, those who deem themselves wise are fools in foolishness of their own wisdom. He who created the ear, does he not hear? He who created the eye, does he not see? God sees all. I speak to the council as Moses, to Pharaoh. Let God's people go. Make the necessary changes to judge righteously, as difficult as it may seem to be. Put God, God put you in this position, and he will help you if you ask him. Please do not squander your opportunity in the fear of shame of the wicked who have nothing but evil intent for all. We speak to warn of God's wrath to come. Repent, for the kingdom is at hand.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Sharon Dooley.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Sharon Dooley. I'm from the Upper Room Church of God in Christ at 3300 Idlewood Drive in Raleigh. And I'm here to speak on behalf of children being killed in abortion. Before I begin, I'd like to acknowledge the comments of the abortion activists we heard last month. As anyone today knows, the Saul Alinsky tactics of projection and gaslighting are the go-to strategy for all extremism. As these things are never grounded in reality, I feel no need to refute them. But I will say that our right to be in the public spaces and the use of amplification has already been resolved between Mr. Anthony Mangini at the council, or he's the legal counsel at the Center for Religious Expression, and Mr. Ashby Ray, Raleigh City Attorney, last fall. We will not be giving up any constitutional rights to speech, expression, or assembly. Since the unjust, unconstitutional Roe v. Wade decision in 1973, American citizens across the nation have been forced to allow the killing of preborn children. This injustice directly defies the Declaration of Independence, the Fifth and the Fourteenth Amendments to the Constitution, most state constitutions, and most importantly, the law of God, who said, as we all know, that thou shalt not kill. But what did we do? Bernard Nathanson, founder of NARAL, who was an abortionist behind the scenes of Roe v. Wade, said they had found a niche market and talked about, excuse me, talked about a way to exploit it. They came up with the idea of linking the killing of preborn children to women's rights, rightly guessing that some extreme women might actually agree to this, and he was right. Women, in our rush for equality, decided that killing our kids would even things out, and we bought that lie that is perpetuated today. You see, we are the voice of the unborn child when that child is about to lose his or her life. We are the ones that come to stand on the edge of the cliff when those scared and hurting women are there, and all they have are others telling them to leap, to jump off the cliff. We tell them that they don't have to, that there's hope and help for them, that they can do this, that they will always have in us support and friends and help, people who will walk with them along the way. No one has to kill or pay anyone else to kill their child. That is not what civilized people do. We want to continue to work assisting women and children without the horror of death being prospect. Therefore, I ask for Raleigh to be a sanctuary city for its unborn citizens. It is too late to be the first U.S. city to be that leader, but you will be in good company with the six cities in Texas, Roswell, New Mexico, Riverton, Utah, as well as six additional cities working on their status. Gatkin County, North Carolina.
Thank you very much. And I'd also like to remind everyone, when we ask you to give your name and address, please give your home address, not a business or affiliation. Thank you. Next, we have Addison Woolsey. And then after Addison, we have Ken Cheeseman and Gavin O'Amelia.
I'm Addison Woolsey, and I live at 2904 Creek Moss Avenue. Some people see fetuses, which means babies in Latin, aren't people because they're dependent on their mother for survival in the womb. But if we can kill people based on their dependence on other people, then half the population would be wiped out. Even once babies are born, they would die without a person feeding them, and a nine-year-old may die without a caretaker. But we don't argue that we can kill them. We need to stop saying it's up to the woman because it's her body. Actually, it's not her body. It's a baby inside of her body. Even our murder laws state this fact. If you murder a pregnant woman, you're charged for murdering two people, the woman and the baby. If one person has a different DNA than another, then they are a separate person. The fact that a fetus has a different DNA from its mother undeniably establishes him or her as a separate person. Preborn babies' hearts are pumping blood, not the mom's heart. Every abortion stops a beating heart. When you say these precious babies aren't people, it reminds me of how Hitler said Jewish people weren't people. Jewish people are just as much people as anyone else. So are the unborn babies. Hitler killed around 6 million people, and the United States has killed around 65 million people by abortion. It was legal for the Nazis to murder the Jewish people, and today, it's legal to butcher innocent babies. But just because it's legal doesn't make it right. These babies' lives matter, just like Jewish people's lives matter. The Nazis made films telling people concentration camps were happy-sunny camps, and people are telling you that abortion clinics are health care. Just as concentration camps were not fun but torturous, clinics are literally death care. The Nazis threw the Jews' dead bodies into a trash can. It's disgusting that bystanders allowed the Nazis to do that, and it's nauseating that we allow doctors to do this. Tonight, if you find that you will not stand for the unborn in America, then ask yourself if you would have stood for your Jewish neighbors. I hope that we would all be convicted of our cowardice and through compassion have courage to stop this modern Holocaust. Thank you.
Ken Cheeseman, and then Gavin O'Amelia, and then Kevin Creasy.
Ken Cheeseman, 107 November Street in Garner. The reason I'm here is to demand that the council stop sinning by omission, the sin of doing nothing to defend the murder of innocent lives in Raleigh. James 4:17 says, "So whoever knows the right thing to do and fails to do it, for him it is sin." Counsel, stop sinning. Make Raleigh a sanctuary city for the preborn. Luke 16, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, the King of kings and Lord of lords, gave this amazing parable, and it's in the context of a dispute with the Pharisees. The Pharisees are those that had power and authority, just like you, counsel, power and authority. He explains, "The rich man that had no faith was cast in punishment. Lazarus, a man that was poor, was cast in heaven with Father Abraham." There's a great divide. He ends the parable saying this, "The rich man says, 'I beg of you, Father, to send him to my father's house,'" speaking of Lazarus, "'for I have five brothers, so that they may be warned, lest also they come into this place of torment.'" Abraham said, "They have Moses and the prophets. Let them hear them." And he said, "No, Father Abraham, but if someone goes to them from the dead, they will repent." He said to him, "If they do not hear Moses and the prophets, neither will they be convinced of someone that rises from the dead." Counsel, what's going to convince you? Is it going to be someone rising from the dead? Someone did rise, that man is Jesus Christ. His word is sufficient. Jesus said this to the Pharisees before he told this parable. He said, "It is easier for heaven and earth to pass away than one dot of the law to become void. The universe will dissolve before the word of God will." And I ask you to repent and believe God's word. The Pharisees, like you, counsel, were breaking the law. Exodus 20:13, "You shall not murder. You give hearty approval to murder within the city." Repent. The Pharisees, like you, counsel, will be judged by God. Jesus said, "You are those who justify yourselves before men, but God knows your heart. For what is exalted among men is an abomination in the sight of God." Stop the abomination of abortion. Repent of your sins and turn to Christ. He is the only way. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Gavin O'Amelia. And then after Gavin, we have Kevin Creasy, Zach Brady, and Brian Brady.
Gavin O'Amelia, 813 Lake Shore Drive. I'm here today on behalf of the dozens of innocent babies being dismembered and murdered every single day here in Raleigh. These babies are undoubtedly human and deserve equal rights. They are not, as some would claim, just a clump of cells. Clumps of cells don't have unique genetic codes, heartbeats, brains, hands, feet, blood, nerves. They are children, and they are a magnolae. They are made in the image of God. And therefore, abortion is murder. It is the moral duty of you as the city council to make it illegal in Raleigh. Abortion is wrong. First of all, it is totally unconstitutional. The Constitution says that you cannot deprive anyone of life, liberty, or property without due process of law. You cannot uphold Roe versus Wade and the Constitution. They contradict each other. The Declaration of Independence says that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights. Among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. But what about the baby's life? Also, abortion is unbiblical. God says, "You shall not murder." Proverbs 6:16 says that God hates the hands that shed innocent blood. Don't let that be your hands. Abortion, for any reason, at any stage of development, is murder. And the city council has a duty to uphold justice and to punish evil and to outlaw abortion. Paul says in Romans 13:4, "For he," speaking of the government, "is the servant of God, an avenger who carries out God's wrath on the wrongdoer." And I realize that it might be political suicide to make abortion illegal in Raleigh, but that is far better than the alternative of eternal suicide. Revelation 21 makes it very clear what happens to those who would commit murder. As for murderers, their portion will be in the lake that burns with fire and sulfur. And woe to you, who ignore the clear commands of God by allowing and celebrating the murder of babies. Now, I don't say this to you out of pride or arrogance. We are all sinners, not only for the sin of allowing this atrocity in Raleigh, but for hatred, lying, lusting, covetousness, and there is no one who is not a sinner. And if God is just, you can't just overlook our wrongdoing. Our sin must have consequences. The consequence for sin is death. But God sent Jesus. Jesus lived the perfect life that you and I couldn't live, and he died the death that we rightfully deserved. And then he rose again, defeating death, sin, and Satan, and allowing sinful people like us to have communion with a perfect God like him. Repent. Believe in Jesus and make abortion illegal.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Kevin Creasy.
Kevin Creasy, I live at 2129 Balboa Road, Raleigh, North Carolina. Thank you for allowing me to speak before the council. I'm going to, I consider this to be a great honor, and I pray for your salvation every single day. I'm going to describe the true nature of God and man, point out the great sin of abortion, and urge you to repent and believe the gospel. God is raffle. 2 Thessalonians 2:11, "In flaming fire, taking vengeance on those who do not know God and on those who do not obey the gospel of our Lord Jesus Christ." God is just. Psalm 9:16, "The Lord is known by his acts of justice. The wicked are ensnared by the works of their hands. God will execute justice on everybody that rejects his call to salvation through his Son, Jesus Christ, because we have all broken God's law." So I urge you to repent and believe the gospel. Abortion is murder. God is loving and merciful. That's the great news. John 3:16, "For God so loved the world that he gave his only begotten son, that whosoever believeth in him should not perish but have everlasting life." And where it says, "in world and whosoever," you can put your individual name in there. He died for you. He is offering you mercy, forgiveness, and eternal life if you will accept it. John 6:37, "All that the Father gives me will come to me, and the one who comes to me I will by no means cast out." This is what Jesus said. God is forgiving. Psalm 103:12, "As far as the east is from the west, so far as he removed our transgressions from us," that includes abortion. Hebrews 8:12, "I will forgive their wickedness, and I will remember their sins no more," that includes abortion. Micah 7:19, "You will cast our sins into the depths of the sea," that includes abortion. See, man is sinful and wicked. Romans 3:10, "As it is written, there is none righteous," no, not one. Romans 3:23, "For all have sinned and have fallen short of the glory of God." Romans 5:12, "Therefore, just as sin entered the world through one man, and death through sin, and this way death came to all people, because all have sinned." Jeremiah 17:9, "The heart is deceitful above all things and desperately wicked. Who can know it?" See, abortion is an atrocity that the wicked heart of man has conceived. You're not going to have unlimited opportunities to be reconciled to God. God has a deadline, described in Proverbs 29:1 and 6:15. Whoever remains stiff-necked after many rebukes will suddenly be destroyed without remedy. Therefore, his calamity will come suddenly, instantly. He will be broken, and there will be no healing. God is loving and merciful. John 10:9, "Jesus said, 'I am the door. By me, if any man enter in, he shall be saved and go in and out and find pasture.'" Jesus said in John 10:11, "I am the good shepherd. The good shepherd giveth his life for the sheep." John 10:27 to 28, "Jesus said, 'My sheep hear my voice, and I know them, and they follow me, and I give unto them eternal life, and they shall never perish, neither shall any man pluck them out of my hand.'" If you repent and believe the gospel, you'll be declared forgiven, and you will have a heart that will know abortion is wrong.
Thank you. And next, we have Zach Brady. And then after Zach, we have Brian Brady, Vicki Adams, and Carrie Harris.
Brian Brady's not here.
Okay, are you Zach?
I'm Zach Brady. I just like to...
Oh, you're Zach. Okay, thank you.
You can take Brian off your list there.
Good evening. My name is Zach Brady. I live at 8528 Plymouth Hill Drive in Wake Forest. I'm here, like my friends, to plead with you to make Raleigh a sanctuary city for the unborn. God spoke through Isaiah the prophet, stating, "Woe to those who call evil good and good evil, who acquit the guilty for a bribe and deprive the innocent of his right." Last month, in direct opposition to God, several abortion clinic workers and escorts spoke with this council, begging you to deprive innocent children of their right to life. They stated their purpose was to speak on behalf of the patients of abortion care facilities. They described peaceful Christians who stand against the murder of unborn children and offer the love of Christ as abusive and harassing and terrorizing, bringing their patients to tears, not because of their concern for their children, but because they fear that they might not be able to sacrifice their children on the altar of comfort and convenience. They begged the council to make Raleigh a sanctuary city, not for the unborn, but for the murderous parents seeking to slaughter their infants by creating unconstitutional buffer zones and noise ordinances outside the mill. Why? Because, they said in their words, "Abortion is a right, a choice that matters that should be protected by the city." As evil spewed from their mouths, Isaiah's words rang clearly in my head. Woe to those who call evil good. Their speeches were just that, and they will be tonight, promoting the evil of murder as a good and wonderful right. When these escorts stand up and advocate for the patients of abortion care facilities, what they are really saying is they want to ensure that women are allowed to continue to disembowel and decapitate their children. They are pleased to protect women entering the death camps are no different than a slaveholder in the 1850s, begging the government to protect his right to treat other human beings as property and animals. Pay no attention to those image bearers of God who are being whipped and beaten and chained. Rather, focus on the poor slaveholder whose livelihood is at stake, who's in tears as he thinks about his bottom line and his loss of property. he thinks about his bottom line and his loss of property. Those abolitionist Christians demanding an end to slavery are abusive and harassing, the slave master says. Slavery is a right and a choice that matters. It's valid and meaningful, he cries. 160 years later, we look back on slavery in horror and disbelief, unable to fathom how a society could treat precious human beings as nothing more than property, repulsed by those who would argue that slavery was a right that should be protected. I believe 160 years from now, we will look back on abortion in the same way, in horror and disbelief, repulsed by people who would stand up and demand the right to murder and dismember their children. Abortion is not a right. It is a grievous sin. Rights come from God, and He has not given anyone the right to murder their children. Rather, God will judge those who take away the right of life of innocent children by casting them into hell. But thankfully, Jesus Christ the God-man, He gave up His right to life by dying a horrible death on a bloody cross, paying for the sins of His people, and offers life eternal to those who will turn from their sins and surrender to Him, the risen Lord. So, city council, I pray that you'll see the folly of these pro-aborts, that you'll pay their arguments no mind, that you will repent of your sins, turn to Jesus Christ in faith, and make Raleigh a sanctuary city for the unborn.
Brian is not here, so Vicki Adams?
Hello, my name is Vicki Adams, and my address is 8620 Wildwood Fars, Drive, Raleigh, North Carolina. I'd like to talk to you about the sanctity of life. The 1920s in America were turbulent times for African-Americans. On one hand, we had the Ku Klux Klan coming into our homes, pulling our children out of our homes. Our sons and daughters were thrown outside, and they were lynched, raped, and pillaged. But on the other hand, we had to contend with Margaret Sanger, the founder of Planned Parenthood, who galvanized a nationwide frenzy all around a movement called Eugenics. This particular program is based on the faulty notion that minorities, blacks, and Jews, were weeds and were not worth being born. We're not worth reproducing, reproduction. We were considered imbeciles, morons, feeble-minded. Margaret Sanger's role, goal, was to reduce the undesirables from the population. Sounds familiar? Yes, it is just like, it was just like Hitler. Now, I have reminded you of this history because Margaret Sanger's genocide through abortion marches on. How do I know that? Well, you see, I see it firsthand. For seven years, I have stood at Women's Choice Clinic with grandmothers, mothers, sons, and daughters, and I have watched young minority women go into this organization, walk up steps, being escorted up steps, and then after the abortion procedure, come down shaking like a leaf, crying, weak, and barely able to walk, and no one walking with them. I've also heard a male escort say, "I don't care if they kill all the nigger babies." I've heard that, and we have heard that. This is Margaret Sanger's genocide. So the question is, what makes me relive this nightmare? Go to the clinic every Saturday for seven years, smell the stench coming out of the building, allow myself and our team to be cursed out every Saturday, just about. Why do we do it? Because our children matter. We matter. You see, the God of the Bible created us. He made my beautiful black skin. He constructed my brain, my soul, my spirit, and we are worth being born. We were created in God's image, and we were created to be a witness for His glory and to challenge this genocide.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have Carrie Harris. Next we have Carrie Harris, then John Long, then Therese Turner. Is Carrie Harris here?
I'm going to try to get through this without going into a coughing fit. I have an upper respiratory thing going on, so please forgive me if I do. So my name is Carrie Harris. I reside at 725 Royal Anne Lane. I'm here to respond to the series of erroneous complaints that were presented to you last October, the last meeting on the first of October. And there were a few volunteers who were obviously, who were obviously pro-choice, escorts, and staff members who came before you to complain. So I go to the clinic at least once a month, more often if I can, and I assemble with other church groups, my own church group, the Upper Room Church of God and Christ, and other organizations, to pray for many frightened women who feel like they have no other choice but to violently, violently, excuse me, terminate their pregnancies. Because of the continuance of our pro-life stance, it's important to the body of Christ that we stand up for the unborn, those who cannot speak for themselves. And so we carefully adhere to your city codes that are outlined, and I just want to address some things that were brought up. Our protests are vocal. We have that freedom and that right to stand on the easements and the right-of-way, the public ways, I think that's the proper term. And so we take full advantage of that. So we always have designated individuals who hold the permit that we have obtained from the city, and there's always someone who has that in their possession. Regarding the standards of conduct for protesting and picketing in the city code, Section 12-1057, we're very careful to honor what you've set up, because we want to be able to continue to do that and exercise our right to stand up for people who can't speak for themselves. We pray, we sing, we preach, but we never block or interfere or obstruct the driveways where people are entering or exiting the facility, the abortion facility. We do carry impactful signage, the signage they are within the legal parameters of 36 inches. We try to do everything according to what you have set forth. Anything that is against the law, we won't do that. We won't confront the escort workers in the ways that they said that we do. We don't do that. That's not who we are. We're there for one reason, and that is to speak up for people who cannot speak for themselves. So what we do is, yet we save women, those who are willing, those who are willing to listen, and there are plenty of them, from making a lifetime decision of torment, endless guilt, pain, shame, all those things that are associated with terminating the life of someone who has done no wrong. On the other hand, many times, I personally have observed, thank you.
Thank you very much. And next we have John Long. And after Mr. Long, we have Therese Turner, Tamara Avant, and Steve Hall.
John Long, I'm from 1009 East St. Julian Place in Apex. I came here tonight because some weeks ago, individuals representing a Women's Choice on Drake Circle petitioned you to introduce new restrictions on the freedom of speech being exercised by the pro-lifers outside the clinic. I believe that is unfounded and unnecessary. I had some slides, don't know if they're here. First, well, on the first slide, there was an extensive survey by 5,577 college biologists around the world that showed that 96% of them know that life begins at conception, and the vast majority of these individuals are themselves pro-life. That was from the University of Chicago. A reasonable person could look at this and other evidence and conclude that because life begins at conception, it's wrong to abort. Science informs us of these facts, and my faith compels me to try to help these unborn children and their mothers. That's why I am there, and I believe it reflects the motivation of the other pro-lifers there. And also, wanted to just underline that we do not harass or threaten the women coming to the clinic. We want to talk to them because we want to win them over, not try to punish them. Neither do we try to harass or threaten the escorts at the clinic. In fact, we want to persuade them to become pro-life. For many of us, we were in favor of abortion in our past. And then I had a photograph. When you come out to the clinic, if you could come out to the clinic, you will often see that we stand side, right next to the people that we disagree with very strongly, but no one is, no one is shouting, nobody's pushing, and we often find the people we disagree with walking around us and among us. I did have some requests. We do see that many of the younger escorts call the police over very trivial things. The police will respond, and it will often be a non-event. It does waste time and money for the police, and we believe that they need some better training. And we would invite you to do, do come to Drake Circle and see how we conduct ourselves. You may disagree with our message, but we are well behaved. The escorts often walk through our gatherings, but they're never harassed. Finally, we ask that you allow us to continue to exercise our First Amendment rights to freedom of speech. Freedom of speech is a freedom for everyone. It's not about the speech of those you agree with, but about the speech you disagree with. When we begin restricting speech, we can easily swing around one day and begin restricting our own speech. Thank you for the hard work that you're doing, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have Therese Turner.
Good evening. My name is Therese Turner, 1004 Cookwood Court. I am here today to ask you for the protection of my voice and the voice of those whom I am about to speak. I often think about the power of one voice, the one voice that urged me to keep my baby when every other voice around me told me to do the opposite. I thought about that voice the day that that same child, who then aged four, asked me if he could donate his Christmas gift to a child who was needy, which he continued to do so every year. And again, I thought about the voice when the child, on his senior day of high school, his name was called six times for academic achievement, and on the day he graduated with honor from North Carolina State University. That, one of the things that compels me today, to be that one voice for another person in that same situation who may want to reconsider her legacy before it is destroyed for good. I have been hindered from exercising my constitutional right to freedom of using my voice at a Women's Choice Clinic in Raleigh in different ways and in an ongoing basis, and I'll tell you how. For example, the woman in this sign, the day that I was lending my voice to sing with a group of other people, with the other people's voices, she brought out her loudspeaker and then performed a profane dance in front of me and in front of the men, women, and children who were there that day. The name of the song she was playing on her loudspeaker was called "Another One Bites the Dust." That is, as a group of women, 70% of whom looked like me, were in the clinic to abort their children whose children looked like mine. Then in another situation, I used my voice to talk to the women inside about the importance of legacies. I told them about how Simone Biles was adopted. She was conceived and born at the wrong time, in the wrong circumstance, by the wrong father, but that none of those wrongs had determined the value of her life. And about another woman who, at 19 years old and poor, conceived a baby, but through that baby, the world would know two of her granddaughters, Venus and Serena Williams. While I was speaking about legacies, about three or four women came out of the door of the Women's Choice Clinic and stood at the entryway to listen to me, but they were prevented from hearing me by several escorts who left the parking lot, who went up to the door and aggressively herded the women back inside before returning to the parking lot and again turning on their loudspeaker. And yet another example, a woman came out of the clinic, and she walked to the street where I stood and talked to me one-on-one.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have Tamara Avant.
Hi, my name's Tamara Avant with 3305 Drake Circle. First, I just want to state, this, stop.
Shut up. Go ahead.
I first wanted to start by saying that as a non-Christian, and certainly not the only one in the room, I find this evangelizing to be offensive to other faiths. It's non-inclusive, and it's a clear violation of the separation of church and state. I also want to state that the comparisons to slavery and the Holocaust are insensitive to people of color and Jewish people, and it's surprising to me. I'm here today because I spoke in the October meeting about the need for a buffer zone to protect both patients and volunteers at a Women's Choice of Raleigh. In that meeting, I shared I had a PhD in psychology, and I stated that I would be a subject of additional harassment simply by speaking up. In the months since then, I volunteered three times. In that time, I've been mocked for expressing my concern for our patient's safety and my own safety. My degree has been denigrated, and I want to note that in all these cases, these comments were made to me on the easement of clinic property at the driveway. In that time, I have not spoken a word to any protester, so all of this language has directed at me without any engagement on my part. Some of the things that have been said to me is that I am a liar. I've been mocked for being terrified repeatedly. I've been told that I lied to city council, and I assure you that I have not, and also would welcome you to come and visit. A quote is, "Does she look scared while Facebook Live streaming me?" And the language that followed that was, "She just looks like a liar to me." I've been told that I am not appropriate for my field. I've been misnamed a psychiatrist repeatedly, which I'm not, and told that they felt sorry for my patients and that I didn't belong in the field. To mock the comment that they believe I was terrified, they say things like, "Let's get a picture of the terrified. Let's get a picture of the terror. Why do you keep coming out here if you're so scared?" I've been called a murderer of babies, and they've repeatedly said that they're calling on city council to repent of their sins as well, so your sins as well. I feel like the evangelizing that's happening here is a waste of time. Other things that have happened is we've had volunteers who were in wheelchairs who were told that they would be slaughtered by Nazi Germany, told a volunteer who was humming that she was not allowed to hum a hymn, yelled at a black volunteer in her face, within inches of her face, that she was a token and a race traitor. We often hear protesters pretending to be a fetus and talking as if they were a fetus, yelling at the building. There is a significant amount of yelling, sometimes decibels reach in the 90s and the hundreds that I've clocked. All of this occurs in the driveway of our clinic, so on the easement by our property. There is a huge circle of land across the street where they are more than welcome if they would like to engage in peaceful protest. What happens in the driveway is that we have protesters who are directing traffic the other way, which is distracting and confusing volunteers, or, I'm sorry, patients. Our volunteers are blocked from that, so we have scared patients, and they're fearful.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have Steve Hall.
Madam mayor, members of the council, it's a pleasure to address you tonight. My name is Steve Hall, and I live at 203 Lions Gate. And I'm here tonight to speak as an individual who participates both in prayer and sidewalk counseling at a Women's Choice at Drake Circle. I decided to address the council after viewing statements paid by two of the volunteers last month. First of all, I am pro-life, but I'm also pro-respect. I am pro-respect of the women and men that come to this center and seek guidance. I am equally pro-respect for the men and women that work at this clinic. That is why I felt it was important to go on record stating that I have never seen any display of the conduct described by what these volunteers stated. In fact, I, like most other people of faith, adhere to conduct ensuring Christ is lifted up as we speak life at this clinic. I would also like to make one additional comment. As I am sure you are aware, a Women's Choice is a profit-for-profit business. It is important to understand that every woman that makes the choice of life for her baby is actually lost revenue for this business. At last month's meeting, you were invited to come to the clinic and see for yourself. I also would like to invite each and every one of the council members to come to Drake Circle and see for yourself. You will find out that the information previously provided was, at best, limited and one-sided. Finally, I submit that any restrictions on the proximity and the ability to speak with these women and men coming to the clinic is not really in the best interests of these individuals, but an attempt, perhaps, to generate the most profit possible. I ask this council to seriously consider making Raleigh a sanctuary city and lifting up the life of the unborn. Thank you.
Okay. And next we have Mary Hall. Is Mary Hall here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mary Hall, 3305 Drake Circle. I prefer not to give my personal address for reasons, what I'm going to speak about. Although one in four women, on average, under the age of forty-five, has had an abortion, it's rare for a woman to speak about her experience. It's even more rare for a woman who talks about her abortion in public. In that silence, in the absence of a woman speaking their truth, we hear from men and women, even children, who want to ban abortion. Every so often, we do hear a woman who chose to have an abortion speak about why she is against women having that very same choice. Kathy Firth from Wake Forest, who has spoken here many times, addressed the city council on September 3rd and spoke about her experience choosing to have an abortion. She was sixteen. After her abortion, she entered a time of drug addiction, alcoholism, and a severe depression that lasted many, many years, per her statements. Her truth is that her abortion robbed her of having biological children, and she carried her guilt and shame for thirty years. That is her truth. As a resident of Raleigh, I am telling you, my elected officials, my truth. I was sixteen years old. I don't regret having an abortion almost forty years ago. It changed the course of my life, as so many decisions we make do. My three children, who are all watching online from various places. My four grandchildren are loving, kind, generous, and the best thing that ever happened to me, and I could never regret a decision that brought them to me. Perhaps I don't have any regrets because forty years ago, I didn't have to walk through a crowd of strangers calling me a murderer. Maybe when these folks are shouting at pregnant women to not kill their baby because they will regret it, they are actually choosing to plant a seed of discontent, fear, and doubt in their mind, and maybe that is what grows in a woman they counsel. The shame and the guilt, and quite possibly anger and rejection of any religion and God. In Jeremiah, we hear that the Lord has counted every hair and knew you before you were born. I believe a being as amazing as that has the ability to change a person's mind without the help of shouting and bullhorns and lies. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're now moving on, we're now moving on to matters scheduled for public hearing. The first is a rezoning, Z-619. If anybody does not want to stay to listen to the rezoning public hearings, we'll allow a couple minutes before we start those public hearings.
We forgot to, sorry about that.
All right.
This is real helpful.
Thank you.
The crowd, it's bigger and bigger.
We could please, we're getting ready to start the next public hearing, so if you'd like to leave, you could please do so quickly and quietly.
Sure.
Okay, our first item is rezoning Z-619, Davie Harrington, Martin, and West.
This is a request to rezone just under two acres from downtown mixed-use with a five-story height limit and shopfront frontage to that same downtown mixed-use district with a twenty-story height limit, the same shopfront frontage and conditions. And this is at the block bounded by Davie Harrington, Martin, and West Streets. It is inconsistent with the future land use map, also with the plan overall. The Central CAC has voted in favor if affordable housing is provided, and the Planning Commission recommends approval.
Just hang off a second. I couldn't hear you. They're almost out. If they can close the door, it might be a little better. I have to repeat some of that, because I didn't hear it. Thank you.
Get started at shopfront.
So zoning in this area currently is predominantly that downtown mixed-use district. You can see that there is some IX-7 on the south side of the railroad tracks here, so that's the Clancy and Thay site, and the site in question is outlined here in gray. So not too far from where we are tonight, this is immediately south of the Dillon and north of the railroad tracks. So you can see we're on the west side of downtown. This is a view from West and Martin. You can see there's a significant grade change along West Street here. A view from Harrington and Martin of CAM, which is currently on the site, and also you can see HQ in the background there. And then this is the view from Camaro Street, looking back north towards the Dillon along the site. Again, that grade change along West Streets, you can see on the, on the south end here, West is not at the same, the street is not at the same grade as the site in question for the rezoning. I'll speak about that a little bit later. There are a handful of conditions here. They've prohibited selection of uses. They have specifically addressed that grade change and provided for pedestrian connection between Martin and Davie Street that would be ten feet on average and a minimum of seven feet in width. They've specified materials on the first floor. They've specified preservation of the Martin Street building facade, and also specified some height and step backs, as shown on this drawing. So here's Martin, so this is the north side of the site, and they're saying that the maximum height is three stories and fifty feet in the first fifteen feet on the site, then in the next fifteen feet, they can step up seven feet. Similarly, on the Harrington Street side, a similar set of step backs, and then those two are similar, and there's a third one here, another ten foot, ten feet there, and then on the south side, another step back specified. And then here, you can see a seven-foot wide at minimum connection here along the west side of the site.
You know what the maximum allowed height is in that cutout on Harrington that's not part of the rezoning?
Maximum height allowed in the cutout on Harrington, that's not, I'm not following you, I'm sorry.
It's on Harrington?
Mm-hmm, on this side.
It's a little piece that is not, it's not the whole block. There's a piece that's not included in it.
That's the right-of-way.
Five stories.
Yes, probably five stories. That's just what I wondered, what it is currently.
So you want to go back and look at the existing zoning, is your question, then?
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, a little inset.
Right.
What is that?
It's five stories.
Five story, okay, that was my question.
Great question.
I'm going to answer that. I'm sorry. I'll ask you.
They've also specified transparency along the pedestrian connection and along the railroad that would otherwise be required in the public right-of-way, and they have committed to documentation of contributing structures in the National Register District that this property is located in.
I am confused by something I read.
Okay.
The CAC voted in favor, this vote was made on a, on the condition that affordable housing be provided in the project. If it's nothing in the conditions that offer that, what were they voting on?
They're saying that they would support it if that condition were offered. It was a conditional vote of support.
Okay, all right.
And the condition of their vote has not been met. You're correct.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
That's weak, you don't use these--
Right, right. They've also specified the provision of some outdoor amenity areas at the intersection of Martin and West, and also at Martin and Harrington, and they have made some requirements around how parking would be covered and screened or made opaque. So the big change in entitlement here is in height. It increases the residential entitlement by a significant number of units, and it also increases the office entitlement significantly and the potential FAR, just because the allowed height is so much greater. So the future land use map here is community mixed-use. The current zoning is inconsistent with the future land use map, so the base district isn't changing. It's currently inconsistent now. The urban form map here designates this as downtown, and this is within the, recognizes it as proximate to a transit stop. We're very close to Raleigh Union Station and the future Rust Bus. The downtown West Gateway Plan, which was adopted into, as part of the comprehensive plan from adoption in 2009, locates this, recognizes this site as being located in the Depot Historic District and recommends a medium-density mixed-use with a two-to-four-story height and about fifteen to thirty units per acre. And also just acknowledging the proximity to the anticipated Raleigh Union Station and Rust Bus. So a number of consistent policies, a handful of inconsistent, overall inconsistent with the plan and the future land use map. Approval on your part would require an amendment to the comp plan. You'd be changing the future land use map from community mixed-use to downtown mixed-use, and the policies listed here would be deemed inapplicable to this parcel as long as the zoning that you approved was in place. The CAC voted in favor, but only if those affordable, only if affordable housing was offered. It is not, so-- Does that mean the vote would be zero? Right, they do not support because it did not meet their condition, and Planning Commission does recommend approval. What further questions could I answer for you before you open the hearing?
This property is currently in the downtown district?
It's in the downtown mixed, it has a downtown mixed-use zoning district.
Okay.
It's in the downtown area on the urban form map.
Okay.
But the future land use map does not designate this as down, as a downtown area. If you, when you look at the map, you can see basically the Depot District is called out as community mixed-use here. I think the expectation there was that there would be a little bit lower height--
But everything around it is considered downtown? Like if I look at Camaro's inheritance--
Right, so this darker red--
Darker red is considered downtown.
Mm-hmm, yes, sir. And I don't think anyone would say that this is not located downtown, it's just the future land use map guidance was anticipating a little bit lower height. That's really the hinge of that--
That predated me, I'm just trying to figure out why that was done, but, okay.
Do we know how the applicant feels about the possibility of including affordable housing, or are we going to hear--
That's a great question for the applicant. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other questions for staff before we open the hearing?
Go back to one of the consistent policy. The last one, AP DWG 11, what is that about?
So that's an area-specific policy in the downtown West Gateway Plan about development character and design, probably references, I'd have to look specifically, but I believe it references the Depot National Register District, which is, which this is in, so the twenty-story height would be--
Sure.
That's also in the staff report in your attachment, if that's helpful.
Okay, great. We will open the hearing and remind everyone that in a rezoning hearing, there are eight minutes per side, and ask anyone in support of this case.
Good evening, Mac Paul, 421 Fayetteville Street. Here on behalf of the property owners in the block, and we have three owners, Contemporary Art Museum, or CAM Raleigh, is here with me, Charles Long with Centerline is here, home of HQ Raleigh, and Gary Fields, who owns the southern end of the block. These property owners recognized early on that they could come together and jointly propose a rezoning and try to do something really extraordinary on this block, rather than piecemeal development under the current zoning, which, as we all know, kind of lends itself to a stick-built, kind of multifamily product with five stories. So the request all is related to height. It's already DX shopfront, so we're going, proposing to go from twenty, from twelve, I'm sorry, five stories to twenty stories. And I'm, I'm going to touch on this briefly. If you have questions about the comprehensive plan, we can get into more detail, but really, this all comes down to the Gateway West Plan that was done in the early 2000s. And I think through the Planning Commission deliberations, we all, they recognize that a lot has changed, primarily the shift in the location of Raleigh Union Station from the Citrix location when the decision for Citrix to go into the warehouse district, it was shifting the planned intermodal station, block and a half to the south. So with that change, in you looking at the small area plan, it calls for the greatest intensity around the core of the transit station. That plan has not been updated. If it were updated, and I think planning and city council decisions on several cases in the last two years have recognized that this shift has occurred, this case would be consistent with the future land use map and consistent with the policies of the small area plan. So again, it's not been updated to reflect the change in location in Raleigh Union Station. High-level vision is a mixed-use development, primarily residential office with retail-on-the-ground level and a cultural center. CAM Raleigh is planning to stay in this block, extraordinary design, and really try to enhance the character of the warehouse district. One of the things these, the owners did early on was do a national search and look for development and a, in particular, a design team that is a specialist in adaptive reuse and historic districts. They selected S9 architecture, which is based in New York, but has worked all over the country, primarily in the southeast, and you'll see some of the renderings that they have done. This shows you the site today, obviously low-level character buildings that are there on site. The Massey model was one of the early guideposts of developing the program for this site. The colors show you yellow, residential blue, office, green is the, is the cultural arts museum, red is retail, and then the middle of the block is parking, up to about eight levels to accommodate all of the program on the block. These elevations reflect S9's vision for this block. We recognize that these are illustrations, but they did provide a great basis to guide the discussion through the Planning Commission and to develop the conditions around these step backs. So you can see, I'll just point out a couple things. One, looking along Harrington Street, I think the mayor had a question about the existing buildings, they're still there. You can see the taller buildings are well stepped back into the center of the block, so you still have the low-level masonry character of the warehouse district along Harrington Street and along Martin Street. And because of the floor plate sizes that are in the UDO, you can still see there's a lot of lower-level buildings, and the towers are central to the block. This shows you how CAM's facade would remain in place, the kind of historic bay windows along Martin Street, and new museum space, which would be a great enhancement for Raleigh and for CAM. This shows you looking from Davie to the north toward the Dillon, and the lack of accessibility today along West Street for people trying to traverse this block. So one of S9's concepts was, on the owner's property, is to situate a very strong pedestrian connection that is activated. Even had conversations with the city about the area over the right-of-way of West Street, this is a high demand for a dog park, would be a great opportunity, and certainly the city is open to having one program there. The Planning Commission asks that we ensure that this entire facade is activated on the street, on the railroad side, even where it's not required normally because of the railroad right-of-way. And then I'll just touch on the public benefits, which are significant. As I said-- As I said, they went to great lengths to try to adapt new development, going up. We recognize we're going from five potentially to twenty stories, but to maintain that character of the warehouse district in terms of the materials and that low-level building facades that are variable, and having the taller building pushed way back into the center of the block. Major infrastructure investment through that walkway on the property that would connect Davie, which we need to have more circulation in this area. Davie and Martin are the two main arterials in the warehouse district where most of the retail and activation exist and need to be connected together. We believe this design is, is going to take Raleigh in a, in a very strong new direction in terms of pushing the envelope of what can be done here. And the urban plazas, we are committing to a minimum fifteen hundred square feet on the corners of Martin and West and on Martin and Harrington. That would be like it is today with Cam. There's that great programmed outdoor area that is constantly evolving, constantly drawing people in with things to do. I've had conversations with Councilor Crowder about activating those with lots of seating. The code requires, based on the heights and programs, about two hundred linear feet of seating within the public realm on this site. And I, it's, this is the last point, but I would in some ways say it's one of the most important points. This is a free art museum that Raleigh has helped nurture and support over the years, and this will help them control their future destiny. This, we recognize, will enhance one of the major assets. They were one of the first to go into the warehouse district about twenty years ago, along with HQ Raleigh. And one of the reasons they wanted to undertake this, rather than just having some developer come in here and take this project, is for them to ensure that it accomplishes their goals and mission. So with that, we have, I think, a few other speakers, and I know we're running out of time.
They got thirty-five seconds left.
Superfast Gab Smith, Executive Director of Cam Raleigh. Thank you all for creating a city where development like this is possible. With me tonight is former Mayor Smeds York, who's a board member at Cam and a longtime supporter. Also Justma and David Reynolds, board members and longtime supporters, and Scott Hoyt as well. Just very quickly, wanted to acknowledge that we're very excited to try to stay in the area, and our interest is to maximize not only the value of our property, but to allow us to engage even more citizens in Raleigh in the work that we do in the arts and culture. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to this item? Okay. Probably close the hearing. Well, they can't make any changes unless we close the hearing. Yeah, Mark, well, we'll close the hearing.
I'd like to have a little bit more conversation with the applicant.
Okay.
So Mac, I heard you say a couple of things just now at the table at the lectern, and I thought I heard you say you're planning to retain the existing historic buildings on Harrington Street?
We have, in our condition retains the facade of Cam. On Harrington, it could be taken down and rebuilt, but it has to be masonry material. So it doesn't say that those existing facades along Harrington, only on Martin, would have to remain in place, so they, they could be deconstructed.
I just want to clarify, in the exchange there, I heard you say we, we're going to keep the historic buildings on Harrington.
Sorry, no, the feel of the warehouse.
Yeah, and I appreciate the scale, that's good.
Ross, use your mic.
The other thing, I didn't, you showed a slide about making connection from West Street over to Davie and active uses along there. Yeah, that picture. I didn't see that in the conditions. Is it in the conditions?
Yes, it says, you know, it gives the dimensions and that it has to connect all the way through.
Okay.
And it has to be activated as well.
So, and I appreciate the opportunity you gave me to sit down and talk to you about this case. And one of the things, as we already heard, that CAC is concerned about affordable housing. I think we're all concerned about downtown Raleigh not being just for wealthy people. And of course, these voluntary affordable conditions are an opportunity, among other community benefits, to achieve that goal. Now, one of the things we discussed was an alternative way to approach affordability with micro units that would range in the nine hundred dollars a month. Size. But what I also heard was, you know, this is new territory for a lot of people who are looking for financing, and so you weren't ready to make any commitments on any of those items yet. Is that what I heard?
That's correct. We've had a lot of conversation from the CAC on through the Planning Commission about affordable housing. We've had numerous meetings in terms of looking at the potential for arts kind of focus housing and heard that that was not necessarily the kind of equitable way of providing housing. It should be open to all types. And so that's kind of led us down a path toward investigating the micro units as a way of kind of getting to an affordable level. And we have, you know, we've had, we've been open in terms of a desire and intent and an interest, particularly on the part of Cam Raleigh. We don't have a development partner, so that's the main reason. We hadn't yet gotten to that point of committing, not knowing for sure, you know, what that program would look like.
Right, and so the conversation we had was, in some ways, this is similar to the conversation we had with Kane for his project at Harrington and Peace, and that likewise, they say, we, we don't have all our financing partners in place, and so it's hard for us to choose exactly how we want to go forward with either something like affordable units or micro units. And of course, what we did there was, we said, look, we're going to let you keep your options open. Just say that, you know, certificate of occupancy, you'll pick one of those three. And so I'm thinking, well, this is an option, opportunity now to say, okay, micro units isn't a brand-new concept. It is done all over the country, all over the world, so it's not a novel concept. Maybe it is for Raleigh, but seems like we have an opportunity to do something that does promote affordability downtown, that does give more options for people, artists or others, who are not affluent to live in the, in the community here, in the neighborhood. So my thought is that maybe we should take some more time and let that conversation develop and ripen to the point where you get to a confidence level about what you can do in terms, and if micro units is, is the one that's appealing, then let's think about a condition that gets us to that. Because right now, the concern is, you know, we're granting the entitlement, but we'd like to have a commitment for community benefits in return. There's a range of things that you're doing here, which are good, with the stepping back the buildings here and activating the streetscapes. Those are good things. Now, me personally thinks this, I think this is a place, and I told you this the other day, that we just approved Go Triangle at forty. Seems like the obvious spot to put density, and therefore, that additional density could help subsidize some of the affordability components of a downtown project. And I guess you've got your pro forma worked out enough that twenty is enough for you, but I, I think there is an opportunity to rethink what additional development potential you can get out of this parcel if it went higher than twenty, and in return, come up with some creative thinking about some micro units on the, on the parcel, so.
Mac, is there a, I'm sorry, Ross.
So, well, so that, I'm just going to stop right there on that issue. The one other thing that, that has been a terrific problem, and we sort of heard it today with Peggy Seymour, and I guess you were involved in that parking deck over there off of. In Stanhope area. And we've seen it here again, actually with the Kane project, that there's this tremendous glare coming off of these parking decks at night. And I feel sorry for anyone who's going to be living near that building as other things grow up around it. So when I see your condition saying that you're going to do some kind of fifty percent screening, I'm really worried that we're going to get a real high-glare situation that, again, could. I mean, you're a little bit in a unique spot because you're overlooking train tracks and such, but where that glare will really be impactful on potential residential development around you. So I'd like to think a little harder about offering a condition that, that I keep asking for, and that is no direct beam off of your site into parcels that would be zoned for residential, so. So I'll stop there.
So Mac, you know, I, I'm a fan of this project. I, I think it's a good design. I hope that it will end up much like what we see. But I'm sure the devil's in the details on that. I've talked to you about the micro units before, because for us, in the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish, you are in a district where not only is there a train station, but there's also going to be the bus system there. And if we can't say to you, in the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish, we'd like you to look at a way where people who aren't wealthy have an opportunity to live near something that we say is important for us in transportation. And for me, it was talking about those micro units, because I see them working in other places. Is the micro unit something you can't commit to because there's a finance problem? Because there doesn't seem to be a finance problem in terms of being able to get money where there's micro units. It doesn't seem to be a barrier, as sometimes affordable housing can be in the banking world. Is there a reason why we can't commit to that today?
Yeah, now, I can let Gary Fields provide a little bit more detail. I think the main reason we just haven't committed to that yet is that there isn't a specific development partner who has the pro forma and knows how many of those micro units would be planned to be built. But that, there's been a lot of, you know, research and work and discussions in the development community by Gary, and that led us down that path toward being really excited about micro units. But again, I think it's just where we are in this, this stage, and we're here to get feedback from council, obviously. Planning Commission got comfortable hearing kind of the evolution and the, the intent and the efforts being made over the course of the conversation at Planning Commission, and, and not having the condition at this point. That's just, that's the reason we are where we are tonight in, on that front.
Well, I'm open for this development. I think the area needs this kind of development. I just want y'all to think hard about how we accomplish, in the spirit of what the city's trying to accomplish around transit, in this case, two different modes of transit, that we shouldn't have some kind of way to secure for the council that that could be accomplished.
And we, you know, obviously, are here for your feedback.
I'm not sure that the majority of council is ready to vote on it yet. Would you be okay with it going to committee for a round?
We'll probably have to hold it here first.
Hold it here first?
Unless you're committee.
She's going to meet next week.
You're meeting next week?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, because I know.
She said, yeah, she announced she was meeting next week.
Okay, I didn't know, okay.
Is that okay? I'll give y'all some time to talk about it, Mac. Enough time. Come to committee.
Sure.
But I, definitely, I believe, looking at options for affordability, find in some way, you know, to micro units, studios, I don't know. But what the, what that it is, but we need to find an it.
Okay, so we'll refer to committee.
Okay.
We're going to keep.
Did you open, you, did you open or close, I mean, did you close the hearing?
The hearing's still open. I closed it, but I opened it back up, so it's still, the hearing's still open.
Until when?
Did we close?
Till November nineteenth. Yep, it's the last meeting.
In regard to committee?
They'll refer to committee, right. You know. Find them, do you need to? Okay, okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mac.
Can we, Madam Mayor, for this one, can I see if there's anyone to speak on this? Because if not, I wonder if we can refer this to December third.
Yeah, is there one in here that wishes to speak to Z seven nineteen?
Okay.
Corey, is this the one where they were trying to find ingress and egress and that, and they have that right away?
Correct, correct. So they're still working on that. So we're going to ask if we can just hold this until December third to come back.
Continue the hearing to twelve to the third.
To continue the hearing until December third, because there's still some conditions and things that the property owners have to work out with the adjacent property owner.
Okay, great. So, on to number three. Continue, this one on December third. All right.
Yes, ma'am. So the next one, Six Forks and Industrial, Z fifteen nineteen, came out of Growth and Natural Resources Committee earlier this afternoon. My understanding is the applicant is ready to submit revised conditions that have been discussed with the committee, and would like for the hearing to be closed, so they can go ahead and do that and come back to you on the nineteenth.
Okay, let me ask if there's anyone here that wishes to speak to this item. This is Six Forks Road and Industrial Drive. Okay, then we'll close the hearing. And it'll be back on the nineteenth? Okay, so this item comes back to us when the hearing's closed, and Z fifteen nineteen comes back to us on November nineteenth.
Which means they have had their conditions in by Friday?
Yes, ma, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
This next item is a new public hearing. This is Z sixteen nineteen on Fayetteville Street. It's a request to rezone about an acre and a half from DX five and DX seven and DX twelve, all with shopfront furniture, to DX forty with shopfront furniture and conditions. The Central CAC and the RHDC both recommended approval with conditions, which are kind of a mixed bag. Some have been met and some have not, and the Planning Commission recommended denial by a four-two vote. You can see the site here, so it's discontiguous. There's a portion that fronts on Hargit, Fayetteville and Salisbury, and then another portion that fronts on Salisbury, Martin and Fayetteville. So existing zoning in this area is all that downtown mixed-use district, but with a variety of heights ranging from three to forty in the area. The Capitol Square HOD is in the block to the north, and the Moore Square HOD is in the block to the east, on the east side of Fayetteville Street. So here's a look at that site, so east of where we are tonight. Does everybody understand the boundary of the grate? So here's a view of the site now. This is looking south along Fayetteville Street. And then a view at Martin and Fayetteville, looking at the site also, and then a view along Fayetteville, and another view from Salisbury Street. So the big change here is the change in height, which brings an increase in residential entitlement and an increase in office entitlement also, pretty significant. Future land use map here is Central Business District, and the urban form map recognizes this as the downtown area and also identifies as a transit buffer. There's guidance for frontage on Salisbury as a transit emphasis corridor, which the shopfront furniture responds to. The, there are a handful of conditions here. They have required the facades of most historic structures to be preserved, except for storefront and window openings. They are requiring a twelve-foot step back above the existing buildings and prohibiting vehicular access from Fayetteville Street. Consistent overall with the plan, with the future land use map, with the urban form map, there are a number of inconsistent policies, but deemed consistent overall. Planning Commission recommends denial by a four-two vote. The Central CAC recommended approval, as did RHDC, both bodies, only with conditions. The Central CAC conditions, they were looking for ground floor facades to be preserved. It's unclear if what's been offered satisfies that, so they've said they would preserve, but not the windows and doors. They asked for the vehicular access to be limited from Fayetteville Street, which was offered, and they also asked for affordable housing, which was not. And then RHDC, their condition that they were looking for that was not offered was an increase in the step back above the existing facades from twelve feet, going a little bit deeper back, going back fifteen feet, hoping for a stronger visual break between the new structure and the existing structure. So that is the summary of recommendations from RHDC, Planning Commission and CAC, all advising you. Do you care to ask me any questions, or would you like to hear from the applicant? Do you care to ask me any questions, or would you like to hear from the applicant?
So what was RHDC's issue?
They were looking for the step back that was offered to be increased from a 12-foot step back to a 15-foot step back.
Okay. Can you go back, can you go back to the CAC? So I'm just, this one says ground floor facades be preserved, but then when you go to the RHDC's, they're saying.
To clarify what portions would be retained.
But there's been met. Okay.
So as part of the, if you look in your packet, you'll see there's an image that they've included as part of that specifying what their, so the condition says storefront and window openings, and so the RHDC was asking for some clarity about what that was, just to better understand what that was. And there are folks from RHDC to here tonight who can speak more, if that's helpful to you.
I may have a question. In terms of shopfront windows and doors, if a building has currently been modified and doesn't meet those historic standards on that street, shopfront today, we're not asking, we're not saying to the owner of those properties, they have to take it back to historic. We're saying above that, you have to keep it historic, and anything you do in terms of the shopfront or storefront, if it's been modified before, it can be modified again. Is that correct?
Also, the, I'll just show this image as an example. You know, they've offered this very specifically when they say windows, what, you know, they've said in the conditions, facades will be preserved except for windows and doors, and then they've used the Briggs Building as an example of what they're saying they might possibly modify as part of the facade.
So my question, I'm gonna ask it a different way then.
Okay.
So I'm gonna use the Boylan Pierce Building, for example. The Boylan Pierce is a beautiful building, but the ground level has been modified. Are we saying that anything above what has been modified, we would get, it would stay historic, and nothing could be done to that? But if it's been modified on the shopfront side at the street, that it can continue to be modified?
I think it can continue to be modified, but if they change it, they have to go back to the original. That was my understanding.
That's not what it says.
I don't see it. I'm asking, because I'm not sure.
I haven't read it. I haven't read anything that requires restoration.
I think I can answer part of that. I think that five of the 10 buildings are landmarks. Therefore, for the part that's excluded from the zoning case, they would have to go back to the RHDC to get a certificate of appropriateness, to make sure that it was congruous with the historic nature of the building. For the other five, I think they can do whatever they want to do.
So it's just five of the 10?
Yes, that's my understanding, and the applicant can clear that up, but.
Okay, that's.
Or Tanya Tully, if she's here, she can, yeah, she can probably answer that, because I got my information from her.
Okay, and I'd like to have clarity on that, too, because I understand this diagram says things that are not red-hatched, those will have preservation easements or something to that effect on them. But that there, five of them are already landmarked, and so then the question is, does this hatching that provides for preservation exemption, that's exempting them from the landmark status preservation requirements?
If it's a hatch mark on a landmark, it still has to get a certificate of appropriateness. If it is a hashtag on a non-landmark, then there's no limitation. It doesn't turn it to a landmark.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, I got it now.
And there's a list of which ones are the landmarks and the materials for this.
Okay. Any other questions before we open the hearing?
Yeah, and this goes back to the, I heard the protections called historic. Tanya, I've heard, well, she looked like she was deep in thought. I was making sure she was listening. Okay, I've heard the protections. So for that particular facade that's on the screen now, everything that's not red-hatched has some kind of preservation easement or preservation protect, could you just describe what level of protection that is?
So, this is not my favorite example, because it is a Raleigh historic landmark, but if we.
Okay, but pretend it isn't for a second.
Pretend like it isn't. So what this is saying is that the preservation exempt, everything that is not hatched out has to stay the way it is now. If it's hatched out, it can be changed without talking to anybody.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
If it's. If it's not pretending it's not a landmark.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
This is a bad example.
Yeah.
Okay, if it is a landmark.
As a landmark.
So if this, since this is a landmark, if they want to change the frontage on the bottom, what do they have to do?
They would have to get a certificate of appropriateness.
Okay.
All right, I'm trying to find the list of which five is in and which five is out.
Still trying to get to what the exact legal term for that protection of the non-hatched areas is. It's just a.
It's a zoning condition.
It's the zoning condition.
It's a zoning condition.
It's a zoning, it's not an easement. Someone today said it was gonna be historic easements, and so I just want to make sure what I, okay, all right, thanks.
Okay. Tanya, do you know off the top of your head the five buildings that are currently protected, the five, just the five that's protected?
Yes. The ones that are designated as landmarks are the Briggs Hardware Store at 220 Fayetteville Street, Lumsden Boone Building, 226 Fayetteville Street, Mahler Building at 228, Carolina Trust Building at 230, and then the Oddfellows Building, which is the one on Hargit Street.
So that's six.
That should, well, two of them are kind, the Carolina Trust and Mahler Building is one landmark designation.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now I've got to make one more step into this preservation condition that we just discussed. You've read it, and you're satisfied that it achieves the goal that our historic preservation policies promote?
Yes, I believe it meets what the RHDC voted upon, except for the step back issue.
Great, thanks.
Let me ask you another question. Are there any of the five buildings that aren't included that you think should be?
I don't think that I can answer that, that, yeah.
Okay, that's fair enough. All right, then, there's no other questions? Oh, did you have another question? Go ahead.
I'm good.
All right, I'm gonna open the hearing, remind everybody, it's a zoning way of eight minutes per side, so if there's anyone that'd like to speak in support of this case.
Yeah, thanks. McPaul, 421 Fayetteville Street, here on behalf of the owner, multiple owners, I'm not gonna go through every owner, if I could just jump right into it. So this, I'm just gonna touch on three issues. One is the ground level facade, since there are questions about what stays, what could be modified. The RHDC about having exact clarity about what is being preserved, and then finally the step back issue. Just, you know, I think it's important, these are zoning, a zoning condition that would mandate that these facades could never be removed. So all of these buildings today, even the local landmarks, you have to wait 365 days, but they could be demolished if somebody wanted to demolish them. Just, I think it's helpful to see that we've had a long history of changes on Fayetteville Street, and even additions above existing buildings. This is showing you the CBS Building on the corner of Hargit and Fayetteville Street and 1900, and then you just see a, an addition on top, built right on top of that, that is there today, but was, again, modified in 1936. So these buildings go through evolutions. This is one of the taller buildings in this 200 block, but it just kind of undergirds that principle of evolution, and even increasing in height but keeping the facade. As I said, we, it keeps its fabric. We do have language that mandates that, you know, the windows could get old and need to be replaced, but we have to keep the same historic configuration of the window panes, and that we, you know, keep the life to the street level experience. Just touching on the facade, this was a big point at the RHDC, that we have drawings and photographs of each building and showing clearly what could be changed, and most of it relates to the ground level, because there has been constant change of those storefronts over the years. And we, as you heard from Tanya, believe we've reached that request from our RHDC through these. They, there are only a couple, the building, the 19 Hargit Street, which is the Oddfellow Building on the corner there, is a taller building. That one does have, even on the ground level, their masonry pieces that are original, and all of those are shown to be not, not able to be touched by any future changes. This, I'm gonna get into the storefront question. The 20s shows you a good segment of the block right there, and you can see the storefronts. McClellan's came in later, dime store, and it was all glass, so there was absolutely no masonry columns going down to the street level. You can see across the facades of two buildings, all glass storefronts, no structural elements to that section, and then, of course, it went through a, not as an attractive phase in a few years back, but then more recently, a very nice and renovation of the North State Bank and the Mahler there, and you can see columns were added back in that reflect kind of the linear pattern of the upper levels, but that was not there for many, many decades. And that's kind of why the owners have wanted to keep the ability to, you know, adapt to new, and to be active and vibrant in living and breathing as the city evolves over time. And this just shows you even things that appear to be old, like on the Boylan Pierce there. You see that kind of a column on the left side. If you look back previous iteration, 20 years ago, it was different. So that was a very painstaking restoration of the Boylan Pierce to make it look as it did during one period of history. And then I'm just gonna touch on the step back issue. We did show lots of different examples at the RHDC of what different levels of step backs, but I think the point here, this is a 10-foot step, well, this is a 10-foot step back, I believe. It says 12 to, we went with 12, and that was something that we heard was a desire. We did not go to 15, just only because we felt it didn't really attain any, whether it was three more feet, you can see, if you step back far from the building, whether it's 12 feet, 15 feet, you're gonna see the tall addition, but when you're on the street level and you're up close, you're seeing those historic facades of the buildings. So again, just to recap, you know, Fayetteville Street has been a very evolving place, but we recognize this 200 block has these very significant historic character of these facades along there. And yet, the ground level has had some nice and some not-so-nice changes over time, but, you know, recognize that we want to continue to adapt and attract a good, strong tenants with, particularly with the investments the city has made downtown. And then the step back, you know, we feel, there was a lot of conversation when we were going through with Place Economics, y'all retained a group to really look at how Raleigh can have some incentives to preserve by giving additional entitlement, and one of those was this idea of the step back in the facade. And that did not exist, you know, five years ago. So we feel like this is, you know, setting a new kind of approach that the city could use to allow additional height, but to keep that character in place, and we've appreciated the dialogue along the way, and can answer any questions you might have.
I have a question, and it's a non-facade-related question. Affordable housing, where's the conversation? Because I know that was one of the requests from, and I know it's Fayetteville Street, that's high-rent district downtown, but that was one of the conditions and requests from the CAC, and I know we just had a conversation about micro units for another project, so I was just wondering, has there been a conversation of balancing that, those price points?
There hasn't, there wasn't nearly as much conversation in the context of this rezoning in this block relative to the Cam Raleigh, and the reason primarily is that the context of this discussion arose out of the remapping several years ago, and kind of getting to a framework that the city felt comfortable. There was a discomfort that we did not have protections in place at that time, because originally it was proposed for 40 stories, and I know the mayor and others were not comfortable that we don't have those. So it was basically, you know, put on hold, let's have this conversation about what is appropriate and get to this historic issue. So that's why that was the focus, and not, it wasn't driven by a development program. There is no developer, you know, there waiting, or these owners are not looking to develop. Many of these owners have just recently spent millions of dollars restoring these buildings as they are today, but they feel like they want to have, not only for their valuation and financing today, but, you know, just that future ability to recognize that this is an axial street, and it could accommodate greater height, but let's try to preserve that facade.
It was, you're right, the entire conversation came out of the remapping when we were trying to figure out how to save the historic character of some of these buildings, and we didn't have any tool other than to map them at, at the current.
That's fair, and I'm just thinking, even though there's no developer in place and different tools and.
Many owners.
Many owners, and the TCZ option, just a possible condition option, just something to think about.
So, yes. Russ, I was gonna move this along, so if you've got a question.
No, I've got a couple things. I appreciate the discussion about the remapping in 2015. Not sure how many people at this table were on council back then. Of course, that was back before the days when we said, wow, housing affordability is a huge crisis in the city of Raleigh, but there were some of us who said this is crazy, that we're gonna give away all these potentially tens of millions of dollars of height entitlements in the downtown area, up to 40 stories on Fayetteville Street, without getting any community benefits in return, including affordable housing units. But that's, and so Counselor Crowder and I were the two who said, no, we shouldn't be giving away those community benefits, we should be talking about them, but didn't go that way. And so, and then we got into this crazy situation where we're gonna take away the height entitlements from the historic buildings, and there was terrific confusion about whether that was going to protect them or hasten their demise, and so I appreciate that we've finally gotten back to a point now where we found a way to have some applicants who are coming forward, who are willing to commit to historic preservation conditions on these facades. But the fact is, all the other buildings on the Fayetteville Street block, they were not required to propose any affordable units. So in the larger scheme of things, yes, we would like to have that conversation, but in terms of fairness to these owners compared to their abutting landowners and the entitlements they were given without any consideration of community benefits, I don't feel like pressing that one. I feel like pressing the case on historic preservation as we did with the Schuster project. And so I really appreciate what you've done, and there's only one question I have, technical question, and I think there's support for, and that is, from the conversations I've had with the applicant and the preservation staff, there's never, there's not in the conditions a clear delineation of exactly where that step back is gonna happen, and my sense is there's only one logical place, and that's at the cornice line of the existing historic building. So that was where the step back would always happen, not 10 stories up, and then you step back, and I just wondered if that's, something's acceptable.
Well, I think, I mean, my understanding, it is in the condition, it says the step back occurs at the existing roof line, maybe Tanya, or you could give the exact language. So it would be variable, and it would be where the historic building is.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so it says a minimum 12-foot step back, building step back shall be provided at the top of the buildings listed above on the side that faces Fayetteville Street.
Okay, so I guess my only question then for the preservation staff.
It does not apply to 19 West Hargit Street.
So that, it's, Tanya, is that ironclad, as far as you're concerned?
RHDC is comfortable with that. I'm not the one interpreting the zoning condition.
I was gonna say, we could ask Travis that question, or Ken, Ken, I didn't see you.
Well, I mean, it really has to do with preservation intent, but.
Would you like to go to the other one? He's asking if the top of the building is.
Public hearing. Just about. Public hearing. Yeah, no, that's all right. We're not, we're not, we're not, we're not. Now we have a hope in the hearing, because Mac's been talking.
So, the question is how we would interpret this?
The 12-foot.
Well, so the very first time an addition comes in is the top of the building listed, the building that would be in existence at the time that the first application came in to build on top of it, would be that building. So I think it would be interpreted as being the existing building, since that would be the only building this could possibly be referencing it. Now, if someone came in and put 10 stories on top of it and came back later to put another 20 on top of the 10, then it would be ambiguous. And I guess we'd have to think about how likely that is to occur. You could clarify it by specifying the buildings as they existed at the time this condition was approved, or given the date.
Or just say that the step back, for the purposes of this case, happens at the cornice line of the historic facade to be preserved.
Yes.
So, so mayor, I'm going to make a, I'm going to make a
I got, is there anybody else? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in support of this case? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this case?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I got one.
I think I may be in opposition. I haven't heard anyone tonight say what the maximum height under this zoning could be.
Forty.
Forty.
Forty, yeah.
In that case, I do wish to speak in opposition. My name's Ed Gaskins. My address is 612 Lakestone Drive. I've had the privilege of appearing before the council on a number of occasions for clients, but tonight I speak only for myself. I've had a law office in downtown Raleigh for 50 years, and for 30 of those years, my office has actually been on Fayetteville Street in a number of buildings. In addition, I have actually owned, or partly owned, two buildings on Fayetteville Street, one in the 400 block and one in the 200 block. And I'm very well aware, as a building owner, how valuable it is to have a rezoning that would permit 40 stories to be built on that property. But I know that you know that you don't rezone simply to satisfy the landowner, but to do what's best for the city of Raleigh. And I'm encouraged that I hear questions that I think are directed to that. My current office is in the Briggs Hardware Building. As you know, it was built in 1874, and I'm told it's the oldest commercial structure still in use in Wake County. And I think that has some value to the public. It has some value to Raleigh. And I certainly hope that whatever you do will preserve very specifically that historic building. In addition, I'm very concerned, as a citizen of North Carolina, that we may be creating a situation where our historic and beautiful Capitol is forever in the shadow of a 40-story giant in the 200 block of Fayetteville Street. It doesn't seem to me that that's wise. You can have a taller building there, but 40 stories, that close to the Capitol? I ask you to think carefully about that. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight, and I very much appreciate your service, particularly hearing what happened in the early part of the meeting, some difficult issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak in opposition or to this case?
If not, I'm going to make a motion that we move this to, for a public hearing on November 19th.
To continue the public hearing?
I don't think we've had a public
This is the public hearing. This is the public hearing.
So.
I can close the public hearing now, if you like.
Yeah, that'd be
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Oh, consistency.
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah, I would like to get clarity on the step back location.
I thought she said the set back location was, the set back was at the edge of the existing historic building. Is that what she said?
Is that what the condition says? I don't think so.
And I'm not reading the consistency statement.
I mean, Mac, I mean, you can do this. I mean, can you just commit to clarifying that you, what the intent is or where the step back's going to happen?
Well, I think the question is, is there additional clarity needed? I thought I heard Mr. Bowers say that if any plan comes in, it will be, the step back will be from where the existing building is today, each of the buildings in this.
Term of the roof of the
Yeah, existing roof line. So I don't think there's additional clarity needed.
I heard him say there could be some other
No, he's saying if 20 years later, then you decide to put 10 more stories, it might be a different existing roof.
Right, but you would have already
It's probably not going to happen.
Put the step back on the existing building.
Okay.
Okay.
I move to adopt the proposed consistent statement dated November 6, 2019, contained in the agenda materials, and to approve the zoning amendment.
I'll second that. And again, I'm willing to compromise on the 15 versus, a 12-foot step back versus 15, because there is a big commitment on the part of the applicants, the owners of these buildings, committing to these historic preservation conditions. And I think that's really valuable for us, knowing that they could tear these buildings down if they wanted to, but they're not going to do that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is our last zoning case of the night. This was reported out of Growth and Natural Resources earlier this afternoon. The hearing had been continued to tonight. My understanding is that the committee reviewed some proposed revised conditions, and that the applicant would like for the hearing to be closed, so that they can offer those conditions by Friday. So I think they're looking for a closed hearing, and the item deferred to the 19th, so that you all can consider the new conditions at that time.
Okay, I'll ask if there's anyone here that wishes to speak to this item. Well, we're going to close the hearing. We know what you want to say. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak to this? Okay, then we'll close the hearing, and you'll submit conditions by Friday.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You look closely. It's all printed. There's nothing
The last item I'm going to talk to you about tonight is a comprehensive plan amendment, CP 1019. This was requested by Mr. Cox in May immediately, so you adopted the Falls North area plan. And then in concern of council members, he raised this, made this request. So he has asked that Parkway frontage, Parkway corridor designation be applied to Falls of Moose Road and Raven Ridge Road in these areas shown in light green on the urban form map. Planning Commission recommended approval with a revision, and the North CAC reviewed a presentation but did not vote. So a reminder about that area plan. You can see the boundaries of the plan here on this image. And the plan included some language about park-like character, and I think that really is the motivation for Mr. Cox's request. And the area plan, to achieve that, added Parkway Corridor along Falls of Moose and Raven Ridge in the areas shown. And so Mr. Cox's request, so this is what came in the area plan, and Mr. Cox's request goes beyond that here.
So what were the two votes on the planning commission?
I'm on my way.
Okay.
Right there. I'll skip right ahead to that.
You were right ahead of me.
So this would also bring just a clerical text change to the Falls North FN2 policy, just to add clarity there. It's consistent with the plan. Planning Commission, rather than going all the way to Durant Road, recommended just applying that designation up to the location of the Falls River Planned Development District. So there's a lot of specificity in the planned development district about the condition of development along this stretch of the corridor. And so the planning commission said, just go this far on Moose Creek, don't go all the way down to Durant Road. So that was their
And that's fine with me, because I was not aware of the Falls River PD previously.
Right, so you can see the PD applies along, I'm sorry, just along Raven Ridge here. And just in this particular area, there's good PD guidance about what that should look like. So the planning commission is saying you should take off this leg of designation along Raven Ridge down to Durant. That was their recommendation to you. So
Go back to the map again.
Yes, ma'am.
Isn't there a lot of development already on that upper part of Falls of the Moose that doesn't conform to the
Well, so the
Parkway?
East of the Moose River?
No, the top part of Falls of the Moose, above the river.
East of the river.
Actually, most of it does conform to Parkway. If you get up
You're talking about up here?
Yep.
Yeah.
Particularly up there where the shopping center is, I mean, it's very heavily vegetated along the sides of the roads.
There's not a lot of curb cuts. It's median divided and
Median divided, and when you get up there where the shopping plaza is, where the Krogers used to be.
It's all back off the road.
It's all back off the road. There's easily 100 feet, if not more, of vegetation between the road and the shopping plaza.
Okay.
And there's
Anything else?
Interior to that is another road that runs parallel to Falls of Moose, so.
Anything else we open?
No.
Okay.
So if
We will open the hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to this item?
I'm Ron Rogers, 301 Fayetteville Street. We are here on behalf of our client, Triarc Foods, which owns the Bojangles Restaurant parcel located at the corner of Raven Ridge Road and Durant Road. We're here this evening to speak in favor of the comprehensive plan amendment as recommended by the planning commission, specifically dropping that Parkway designation for the portion of Durant Road that is within the Falls River Plan District. Now, our site is within the 25-acre area of Falls River that was designated on the 1994 master plan for Falls River as mixed-use commercial. When you review the master plan that was approved by the city council in 1995, and recorded plats for the area, as well as if you visit the area today, it's clear that this section has been developed pursuant to a unified plan. This is evident in the harmonious use of the building materials, the scale of the buildings, their layout relative to each other, signage, and their common landscaping features, including the streets, trees, and sidewalks. These obviously weren't designed to accommodate a 50-foot natural buffer area. So we would ask that it be adopted with that recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak to this? Okay, seeing, and we'll close the hearing.
Is there a consistency statement that I have to make with this, or not? No, then I'll just move to adopt the proposed amendment.
Second.
As modified by the
As modified, right.
As modified by the planning commission.
Right, as stated.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Got a second.
A second, oh yeah, sorry. Any other, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that brings us to text change, zoning conditions, case TCZ 119, Spring Forest Road.
Good evening. This is a TCZ 1-19. Property's located at 5001 Spring Forest Road. This is a, an amendment to the conditions associated with zoning case 47-08, which was approved in 2009, and the ordinance, that was part of the UDO remapping. This request was reviewed by the planning commission, and they unanimously recommended approval. It was brought before the city council last month, and then referred to the GNR committee for additional input. At that GNR committee meeting, it was suggested that the applicant consider submitting a condition for a 100-foot vegetative buffer on the west and northwest lot lines that border the property. And the applicant has revised the conditions to include this buffer. They have also included a condition to limit the number of dwelling units to 200 units in total. Again, this is a continuation of the previous public hearings, so staff is available for any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
I think when that, when we had the public hearing last time, I had asked for consideration of the 100-foot buffer, but 50 of it be vegetative and 50 of it be no build. I don't know if there was any further discussion about that.
They've offered a condition for a 100-foot vegetative buffer.
I know they have.
So that would be acceptable to me, and that would be acceptable to the
Well, I'm just, I had some conversations with the applicant, and we are, we're saying as a council, we're trying to support affordable housing. We've certainly heard it with every zoning case tonight. So if that helps them
There'll be 200 units of affordable housing.
If this helps them with their project, they still have a 100-foot buffer, but half of it is vegetative and half of it is simply a no build. I'm just asking what the impacts on the project are. But I guess I'll have to open, continue the hearing to get the answer to that, so. We'll continue the hearing, and is there anyone that wishes to speak in favor of this case? Or would maybe, you can calm down.
I've got a question. Does it change the unit count?
I don't understand.
Hello, Amy Howard, 2117 Metacomet Way. I've heard several presentations about this project at my, at the Northeast CAC. I fully support this project, and if the council truly is for affordable housing, like they keep saying over and over again, through these other rezonings, they should surely move this forward as quickly as possible. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? So I don't want to put you on the spot, but I did have, we did talk about, you know, when this condition for the 100-foot vegetative buffer, and I had concerns, was that going to be able to, were you going to be able to complete the project you wanted with that condition? And then we talked about the possibility of a 50-foot vegetative and 50-foot no build. And so how does that impact number of units, or some of the other things?
Molly Stewart, 421 Fayetteville Street. Thank you for the opportunity to address that. We looked very closely over a couple of different committee meetings at what we could possibly offer with respect to the buffer. As you know, the standard neighborhood transition requires 50 feet of no build, some of which would be vegetated. What we have been able to offer is a 70-foot Zone A, which is the vegetated area, with increased plantings over what that would require under a typical Zone A transition area, as well as an additional 30 feet. So there is a 100-foot no build, 70 feet of that would be vegetated.
Okay.
Okay. So that sounds far in excess of what the transition standard is, but can you describe the, can you characterize the vegetation in that 70-foot zone?
Sure. So under the standard neighborhood transition, under the UDO, within Zone A, if it were 50 feet wide, which is the widest Zone A you can have, you would have per 100 linear feet, you would have six shade trees, five understory trees, and 60 shrubs. In that same area, we're offering not only a wider Zone A, but the six shade trees are bumped up to eight shade trees, the five understory trees will be seven, and we'll have 80 shrubs instead of 60.
This area, at least part of it, already vegetated, already has mature trees?
Yeah, don't you? Yes, some of it does. And where we can meet the standards for tree conservation area, we will go ahead and do that. That was another request that we heard. And so the condition actually is fairly complicated, because it says where we can meet tree conservation, we will do that. Where we can't, we'll provide this transition.
All right. So in the areas where you, it's already vegetated, forested, whatever you want to say, that entire 70 feet of forested area would just remain as is unless you needed to augment it somehow to achieve that?
If it meets tree conservation, it would, it would stay as is.
All right.
Right.
I guess I was I guess I missed the original why we were requiring 100 feet as opposed to 50, the standard 50 feet.
It was because I think originally it was 100 feet on the, when the first portion was built and the zoning was put over the entire property. It was, am I remembering that correctly? It was 100?
The current condition is 100, the current condition is 100 feet.
It was negotiated in the previous zoning.
The previous zoning, okay.
That's right.
That's right.
Okay. Well, any other, anyone else wishes to speak to this? Okay, we'll close the hearing, bring it back.
Then I'll move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated July 2nd, 2019, contained in the agenda materials and to approve the ordinance. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we have text change zoning conditions, case TC 219, Durley Road.
Yeah, this is TCZ 2-19, 4501 Durley Road. This is similar in the, to the last case in that it was continued from the previous public hearing. See, at that meeting, this application was sent to the GNR Committee for, again, for additional review. And at the GNR meeting, the applicant was recommended for approval. The conditions associated with this property, as revised, if I would just move ahead here. This is the final set of revised conditions, and these have been in place since May. One, that the prior, prior to redevelopment, the parcels would be recombined to a single parcel. Second, the building setback from Durley Road would be a minimum of 20 feet. The area within that would be primarily vegetated, at least 51 percent. And any site lighting, including wall packs, would be a cutoff design. All pole-mounted lighting would be limited to 18 feet in height. Now, since the last council meeting, I've spoken with the applicant to get a little bit more of background with these, these conditions that were originally placed on the property. And it's my understanding from him that the original conditions were agreed to when the city approached him about the placement of trail access by his property and possibly using his property for parking for that trail. Well, with the history that has come and gone with the trail, these conditions, the conditions that are currently on the property really aren't necessary, which is why he's seeking the revision to these. And with that understanding, GNR had said, gave their blessing on it and recommended approval of that.
Okay, great.
So staff is available for any questions.
Any questions before we open the hearing? Okay, we'll open the hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to speak in support of this case? Is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this case? All right, seeing none, we'll close the hearing, bring it back.
Where's that consistency taken?
I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated May 28th, 2019, contained in the agenda materials and to approve the ordinance.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. And then we have text change TC 618, Cottage Court.
I'll try to make this one as painless as possible. I'll try. Cottage Court, this is a text change, text change 16-18 for Cottage Court regulations. This in Cottage Court involves a small group of houses centered around a common courtyard. This is a form of missing middle housing that can be, improve affordability while fitting into the scale of typical residential neighborhoods. This text change is designed to increase usability. The council referred this to the PC for changes that would increase permitted density. Following that referral, the council's Healthy Neighborhoods Committee made additional recommendations. The summary of those recommendations would be an increase to the permitted density within Cottage Court by 50 percent. They would be permitted on fee simple lots. It aligns itself with regulations within the intent to facilitate a smaller-scale socially-connected community. What we have now is a chart here of what is, what is currently within our ordinance and what is being proposed in 6-18. There would be minimum lot sizes, the R4 would be added, and there would be a minimum lot size of 29,000 square feet. There would be a slight reduction in some of the other zoning districts, but that is based upon it having the fee simple structure, not the condo structure. Here's another diagram of the adjustments that are being made to the sites. There are some adjustments being made to the width and the depth and the courtyard area sizes that were being proposed. So, let's see. This is what we, what is allowed now for the Cottage Court. The building size, there's no limit with the, as proposed with 618. There would be a maximum floor area of 1,800 square feet, whereas before we had a maximum footprint. But now they have incorporated a 1,800-square-foot floor area for the total structure. And there's also been a bump up in the height in the wall to accommodate a two-story product. The current proposal would allow for a maximum, or allow for 30 units per site. All of the Cottage Court standards would, would need to be met with that. The design of the courtyard would be modified. It would be specific width must be, must be maintained at the primary street. And there would be a minimum dimension of 20 by 20 needed to qualify, and the courtyard would be allowed to meander. Now, some of the restrictions that are being placed on this is the courtyard must be a continuous open space. It cannot be parked or driven upon. There could be a common building not to exceed 3,000 square feet within that area, and it could not be used as a dwelling. Other conditions is that inclusive of the common building, up to 20 percent of the minimum internal courtyard area may be covered. Stormwater retention ponds and dry ponds would not be allowed to count as part of that internal courtyard area. Tree conservation would not be included as part of that courtyard area, and retaining walls within that area would be allowed at a height of no more than four feet in height. Retain walls that are two feet or less in height may be spaced as close as 10 feet apart. And let's see, parking setback would be reduced from 90 feet to 50 feet if screened by a C3 yard or principal structure. And the minimum ground floor elevation now only applies to primary street-facing in units. And it's my understanding, and this was in consideration for lots that may slope towards the rear of the property where they would not be penalized for, for any change in grade towards the rear of the lot. Staff explored how to strengthen the requirement that in units provide a street-facing entrance. There was a discussion about general statute that prohibits cities from regulating building design. And therefore, this requirement for street-facing entrances has been removed as part of this text change. At the, also at the meeting, it was discussed that the staff has interpreted Cottage Court developments to be subject, not subject to infill regulations. This would now be explicitly stated in this, in this text change. And it was, one other point that was brought up was that the, the City Council should explore options to maybe expedite the permitting process and or reduce permitting fees for projects that include affordable housing. Staff is available for any questions.
I have a question. The effective density of cottages courts on the minimum-sized lots. So if I have, say, five acres and it's Zone R10, and I decided I wanted to do a cottage court, how many units can I have out there?
Your density would be at 9.9, so I'm not very good at math. So I'm going to say it's just shy of 50.
But we have a limit of 30.
They would be capped at the 30.
Okay.
So I don't know that you would have acres of that big because this is supposed to be an infill kind of event. I love the idea of cottage court, and what we've talked about all along is the ability to have, and I think it's been referred to at this table, is having general density where people might be able to have an opportunity to live in an area in a smaller unit that might be more affordable for them to buy than your standard house. One of the things we talked about originally was keeping these units sort of small so that people could afford to buy these in areas where they might not otherwise be able to afford. I don't know how we got to 1,800 square feet, but to me, I live in a neighborhood where 1,800 square feet is a standard-sized house and families live in them all day. They don't have the feel, to me, of what we're trying to accomplish with having a compact development in sort of an intimate setting in a courtyard where it's sort of a shared social gathering place. So I wonder how, where we landed on 1,500 to 1,800 square feet. If we indeed want the ability for people to be able to afford them in areas where the land cost is going to be expensive to begin with.
Well, I would think the size of the unit would be dictated by the size of the lot.
Yes, yes, that would have some sort of play on it.
But if, let me ask you a question. Was our original goal of cottage courts to have an alternative in our code that we never had before? I'm just looking for clarity, and Travis might be able to answer this. Was it an opportunity for us to explore a different type of housing type that we'd never had before? Where we could add some density into existing neighborhoods in an infill way that was compatible to what they were being infilled to, that added the ability for people to be able to afford to buy these units? Am I wrong about that? Because the first cottage court was built in my district over in Kirby Billu, and we had lots of issues about how it went forward.
So I'll say this. First of all, the cottage court was a new idea that came up with the creation of the Unified Development Ordinance. It was something that staff researched along with the consultants. Personally, it's something that I saw out west on the ground. I had not seen them in this part of the country. Not certain that affordability was really the major lens that was being reviewed at the time of creation of the, of the standards. Obviously, that's, can be a byproduct of this type of development when you've got smaller lots, smaller units. But as we all know, the major impediment behind affordability is land cost. So where you place this type of development has a big impact on, on ultimate cost. You know, this text change is intended to do a couple of different things. First of all, make the regulations a bit more sensical. And we identified some, some issues that we had with the original language. It was through the review of the first cottage court that we saw that was constructed in the city. So, you know, to your, your question, I don't know that affordability really was one of the major points of discussion here.
Okay, but it was to include infill in a, in a way that we hadn't tried before.
Sure, I mean, that's, that obviously is one of the intended outcomes here, is the ability to utilize property in a different way to gain a little bit more density.
The last one that we did, or the only one we've done, I think, so far in Kirby Billu, do you remember how many units there were?
I'm going to say there were seven in that development.
Like two or three stories, right?
Two stories, the maximum.
Okay, thank you.
So the reason why I asked that question about units and we talk about density is, you know, I have Duplex Village, which is duplexes, a lot of duplexes there on New Bern Avenue. And, you know, we talk, when we look at affordability and density, you know, this, and this could be an alternative. But obviously, with it being capped, it couldn't. So that's the reason why I asked that question, just so that everyone's aware. It'd be counted a number of units.
If you didn't cap it, you could-
You would have to split that property.
Well, you, I guess there would be a way to do that, so you'd have two cottage courts. As opposed to one big one, you would, you could split it and have two.
So.
Is that, I think that would be, I think I've seen that done before.
Okay.
Okay, well, let's open the public hearing and ask if there, well, this is a text change. So is there anyone here that wants to speak in support of this text change?
Good evening. My name is John Seibert. I'm from 206 East Franklin Street. I am working with cohousing, with a cohousing community, and I'm here to advocate for the cottage court development pattern. I think it's a great idea. I think this affords us to build communities which foster points of people being able to live in close proximity and developing a tight-knit community. We also have advocated for some of the changes here, particularly the ability to have a common house, which is a key element for cohousing, where there'd be a community space for meals and gatherings. I do also want to advocate for the 1,800-
Oh, no, I was answering.
I do want to advocate for the 1,800 square foot. Just from an affordability discussion, I do think, you know, a 1,500-square-foot house is essentially a two-bedroom house. And if you're a single mom, single, you know, you've got three kids, the, the, the cost for providing that additional space is, is not going to drive the property price up significantly because it's going to be relatively inexpensive space. You're putting in your bathrooms and kitchens regardless of whether it's 1,500 or 1,800 square feet. So it does allow for a little bit greater diversity of housing users, which I do think addresses some of the affordable housing concerns that may be raised. Anyway, overall, we're very excited. We think that the combination of the inclusion of the common house density and, and flexibility on, on house size really is, is a step in the right direction.
Thank you. Anyone else that wishes to speak?
Good evening. Jason Meadows, 103 Stone Lane, Clayton, North Carolina. I'm with Wakeland Design. That's my company, started just recently, but been in the Raleigh market for about 13 years as a civil engineer and designer. I was also the lead engineer with John Erickson Company who designed the first and only cottage court development in Raleigh at Fillmore. So can answer intimate questions about that if we need to. But as part of that, I drew an interest with, with this rewrite of this text change. The cottage court is exciting. There are a lot of nuances of it. There were a lot of things that were done at the first Fillmore cottages that everyone disliked, whether it was the stormwater, or the walls, or the architecture, or the height. So I humbled myself and went to all the text change committee meetings. We had a great group of developers, John included, from an architectural side, and brought the cohousing, you know, piece of it as well. But we also had representatives from the Fillmore neighborhood come and give their input about how we could change this to their liking. And one of them happened to be an architect. And so we talked a lot about what it looked like, what it could be. And ultimately, all of us around the table are really happy with the progress that was made with the way the text stands now. And we really think it's a good opportunity to provide a more relatively affordable option. One of the things that we talk about a lot is the cost of land and all the fixed costs that go into, you know, building a single-family house. The fixed costs, a lot of times, are the same whether you build a 1,500-square-foot house or 1,800-square-foot house. The land is generally the same size. Utilities generally cost the same, you know, same water meter, same septic, same connection. Plumbing is often the same. You may have the same number of bathrooms. Foundation, roofing, all of that stuff starts to kind of play in, you know, staircases, kitchen, windows, doors. All those type of things are very similar in nature. So what we talked about is where was, where was a good mix? And in, in the current policy evaluation for the text change, it talks about Wilmington. Wilmington has an 1,100-square-foot cap on their cottage-style development, and they're building zero of those developments. I also just happened to look at Zillow as I was sitting here, kind of waiting. There are five houses on the market in Raleigh at 1,500 square feet or less. So the 1,500 square feet is just, the economy of scale is really difficult to do that, was a lot of the conversation that we had. to do that, was a lot of the conversation that we had. And really, we, we talked about square footage, but we talked a lot more about all of the other, you know, elements of it. The fact that cottages can be on their own lots, that is super exciting. That's going to make lending a lot easier. The density bonus that you get, that will allow us to put a couple more units on the same piece of property. There was just a lot of positive conversation, and ultimately, you know, where we ended up at, everyone was super excited, and we're ready to go forward and, and build a couple of these in Raleigh. So, thank you for your time.
Sure, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Anyone else here that wishes to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, we will close the hearing and bring it back.
Okay, I, I just want to say one thing about the, the size. I, I really support the idea of Cottage Courts, and I think, you know, especially it can help with affordability. But people who say eighteen hundred square feet, we need that, or it's not livable, it's, I live in a twelve hundred square foot house. It has three bedrooms and two bathrooms, and it's perfectly fine. I don't think we need to go to eighteen hundred square feet to make this work, and I, I think that will really hurt the affordability angle, so I, I can't support that.
Well, what I'm hearing is, we're not saying they have to be eighteen hundred square feet. We're giving them the option to go to eighteen hundred square feet, and if you're looking at, you know, potential, like Mr. Branch pointed out, on those, I think the ability to have different sizes, I mean, what I said about the size of the lot, like you said, the, the cost is in the dirt. And if you're dealing with a smaller piece of property, you're going to make your unit smaller, obviously, to maximize what you can, but there still is a demand for an eighteen hundred square foot. So, I don't think we're saying we're not addressing affordability. I just think we're giving options all within that range.
What I really like about this is it does provide a new opportunity, a new option for folks who are looking for something in that middle range that we are lacking right now. And if eighteen hundred gives us the flexibility that we're hearing we need, then I'm wholly in support of moving this forward tonight.
I have one more of the question. It had always been before in R6 and R10. What was the motivation for R4?
I think the, the motivation for including R4 was just to, just to allow it across the board in all residential districts. That was my understanding from, from the staff that was directly involved with this text change. And it was the feeling just to allow it with all the, all the residential districts.
In the committee, Russ, Russ or whoever, Nicole or Nancy, was there R4 discussion in the committee?
I don't remember any discussion about expanding the zoning.
My understanding was that when this went to committee, the focus was going to be on R6 and R10. I'm surprised that it includes R4.
Did it make us stop at planning commission between us and here?
Yes.
You can't tell because it doesn't, we don't, the changes aren't clear where it came from, whether it was by staff or planning commission or the committee.
I think it's also worth noting that the density for R4 is only R6, so, or it's only six. So, it's not.
Blaming the difference.
I would like to move forward with the R6 and R10, but would like further discussion about it in R4.
So, we're saying we don't want to have a smaller option in R4?
Well, I mean, I would hate to see a developer assemble a bunch of properties and build up to thirty units, for example, in R4. I think if a developer wants to do something like that, that that should be a rezoning request.
It would be a rezoning.
It would be.
This is Cottage Courts.
No, it's going to be by right.
No, it would be by right, right.
By right.
If you assembled a point six six, then you could.
So, you're saying they'll put thirty units on a R4?
Well, if you acquired enough land to do it, sure.
But only six per acre.
But even if it's, even if it's less than that, I mean, even if it's, if it's a dozen units, I mean, that's.
So, instead of four, it's six.
It's okay, it's just coffee.
Yes, go ahead.
I think this was actually coming from staff, because I do remember a discussion regarding this, and I think the calculations work out mathematically to be comparable, and that's why you're seeing in minimum site size, the different sizes in acreage. So, effectively, yes. You obviously have, the underlying R4 zoning would, would effectively be, it would be the same density. It's not going to be any very high density.
Well, that's perfect.
Counselor Stewart said it, Counselor Stewart said it would go to six units, which is essentially R6.
Well, I'm just.
And I'm not prepared to be able to, I'm not prepared tonight to make that decision.
Okay. I would suggest we hold this, and we can bring it back at the next meeting, but I think if you have questions, well, questions about, just go ahead and get your questions to staff.
Can I just?
About, yeah.
I have a few comments to make, and so, I think that the changes we made for fee simple ownership is great, reducing the parking is great. My own experience from looking at Cottage Courts, mostly on the West Coast for many years, is that they're generally, well, I just did a little bit, so I was just looking at the 2019 National Association of Home Builders article, or actually, document on diversifying housing options with smaller lots and smaller homes. And the two case studies they showed, one was in Washington, where two-bedroom units were a thousand square feet. New York State, they were even smaller, five fifty to fifteen hundred square feet per unit. AARP is telling us that more than fifty percent of American households are one or two persons. So, you know, if you want to build three or four bedrooms, that, I think that's a different market. I think the Fillmore example is that the market will build the, the largest thing that they can build, because their sales price is, you know, based on the square footage. So, why would they ever build a, a smaller one than eighteen hundred? I, I don't think they would ever do that. But, but in doing that, I think that they are going contrary to what I've always understood was what we were trying to achieve with these Cottage Courts is a more affordable, a denser affordable option that is compatible with various neighborhoods. And if we start saying you can go above, you know, fifteen units in each court, and you start having a thirty-unit court, that's going to be a radically different appearing animal. I'd rather see two fifteen-unit courts, as was suggested. In fact, that's what one of the top Cottage Court architects in the West Coast says, is just do more of them. Don't just try to do one mega court. But also, I think that the intent here is, is to create a new option that doesn't exist in the market. And there's plenty of eighteen hundred square feet. Now, someone said we don't have any fifteen hundred square feet options out there. Well, okay, because the market wants to build big. And if we can do something to incentivize smaller units by saying, just do more smaller ones, and, and recoup your costs that way, I think that's the way we should approach it.
Okay. We'll bring this back on November 19th, and we'll just keep the hearing open. Okay?
Thank you so much. Look forward to his questions.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Manager? Okay, means adjourned.